This meeting is being convened in person and by electronic means. As such, council members may participate in person or by electronic means. For council members participating by electronic means, please ensure your video is turned on and let the clerk know if you leave the meeting for the purposes of confirming quorum. Council members are reminded that in accordance with section fourteen point one three of the procedure by law, members must enable their video to confirm quorum. If council members attending by electronic means lose connection during the port or during any portion of the hearing, we will recess the meeting until the connection is restored. Uh, let's see if council members lose connection during the voting process, our team members will get you back online quickly. While we suspend the voting process, the contact information has been circulated to you. Members of the public can view the proceedings via the live stream and YouTube link, which will be posted on X at Van City Clerk. In the case of an emergency where we need to evacuate the building, I'd like to direct your attention to the two exits. Um, or to the exits, uh, there are two exits just beyond these glass doors and to the left of the pillar. Um, if these exits are obstructed, we have four on the sides here. Please use the stairs, do not use the elevator. If you require accessibility assistance, please remain in your location and we will get to you. Um, I would also like to highlight the fact that there is the defibrillator at the end of uh, the hallway down here. Um, I'd also like to acknowledge that we are hosting today's public hearing on the unceded territories of the Musquegon, the Squamish and Swaylautu First Nations. And I do want to thank them for their generosity and their hospitality and the love and care they show this land that we get to live, work and play on. Uh, and I do think it's incumbent upon all of us to unlearn what we've learnt in the past, learn the true history as to what's happened on these lands. And if we do that, we're going to build an incredibly bright future for all of us. I also want to recognize the immense contributions of our incredible team members throughout the city of Vancouver. Uh, people that choose to uh, work here, um, they give their all, um, with a lot of passion to make the city better. And we've had the benefit of working side by side, a lot of them. And I can tell you, our city is incredibly fortunate to have incredible people, um, that choose to show up every single day. So, thank you. With that, can we please get a roll call?
Yes, Mayor Simas in the chair, councillor Kirby Young, councillor Dominado, councillor Blythe,
Present.
councillor Frye.
Uh, present.
councillor Montague, councillor Claussen, councillor Meisner.
Present.
councillor Shaw.
Present.
councillor Orr, councillor Maloney. The meeting has quorum, mayor.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, now, before we begin, Trevor's gonna clap. Only one person got that. Alright, um, I do have some announcements. The public may participate by speaking in person, by phone, or by submitting written comments to mayor and council. Speakers will have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. Speakers should also state whether they support or oppose the recommendations and if they are a resident of Vancouver. Speakers representing four or more individuals or groups, including themselves, will have eight minutes to speak. Each individual or group, um, being represented must confirm their representation by introducing themselves either in person or online. Individuals represented by another speaker cannot also speak independently. Speakers may only speak, uh, once and should follow along on X at Van City Clerk for updates on the progress of the meeting so they do not miss their turn to speak. Any comments on agenda items can be submitted in writing through our online mayor and council public hearing feedback web form. This link will also be posted on X. Any speakers who pre-registered with presentations are reminded that the public uh, live feed has a slight delay. To navigate through the slides of your presentation, please say next so the clerk may advance your slides. I also want to note the city of Vancouver's longstanding commitment to equity, diversity and inclusion, including utmost respect for all genders. I remind council that when addressing speakers and team members, we will avoid using gendered honorifics and will instead refer to the person by first and last name, role or title. A reminder that council's role at a public hearing is to be a quasi judicial body, which means council is to only consider the merits of the rezoning application or heritage designation. Council members may, um, ask clarifying questions from speakers, including the applicant or technical advice from team members, but should save debate for after the close of the speakers list. After hearing from speakers, council may one, approve the application in principle, two, refuse the application, or three, refer the application to team members for further consideration. Finally, if council does not conclude hearing from all speakers this evening, we will recess and reconvene the meeting on Thursday, May the twenty second, two thousand and twenty-five at three P M. Okay, so the first item on the docket is C D dash one rezoning four through thirty-six West Third Avenue and five West Fourth Avenue. Now, before we begin this agenda item, does any member wish to declare conflict of interest? Seeing no one in the queue, um, the clerk will now read the application and summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by P C I Developments to rezone four dash thirty-six West Third Avenue and five West Fourth Avenue from I dash one Industrial District to C D dash one Comprehensive Development District to permit the retention of a Vancouver Heritage Register listed building, Nelson's Laundry, and the development of two mixed-use buildings separated by a lane with industrial and private childcare facility, office and retail uses. A floor space ratio of six point six two and a height of fifty-one point eight meters, or hundred and seventy feet, and fifty-five point six meters, or hundred and eighty-two feet, are proposed. The general manager of planning, urban design and sustainability recommends approval, subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation. The following correspondence has been received since referral to the public hearing. Seventeen pieces of correspondence in support, three pieces of correspondence in opposition, and two pieces of correspondence regarding other aspects related to the application. This represents all correspondence received up to four P M. today.
Great, thank you very much. Now, this is the first call for speakers. Any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll free at one eight three 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 five three eighty-six ten, followed by participant code one zero six one four four five pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be posted on X and made available on the live stream. There will be an opportunity for new speakers and missed speakers to be added to the end of the registered speakers list. Now, we do have team members from planning, urban design and sustainability here to present the application.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is, uh, Susanna Row and I'm the rezoning planner for this application considered under the Broadway Plan. Staff would like to note there is a yellow memo attached to this report. The memo recommends a minor amendment to the heritage recommendation as well as heritage designation and C D one bylaws to address the minimum amount of required industrial space to bring the bylaw into alignment with policy. The site, shown in red, is located on the north side of West Fourth Avenue between Manitoba and Ontario streets and the southwest corner of West Third Avenue and Men- Ontario Street. It is zoned I one as our surrounding sites in the Mount Pleasant industrial area with a few newer C D one lots. The surrounding blocks contain mainly industrial and office buildings, ranging in height from two to six stories, with newer developments allowed up to eleven stories. The site currently contains a surface parking lot and three two-story industrial buildings, one of which is a heritage building. Nelson's Laundry was built in nineteen ten and is listed in the Vancouver Heritage Register and is proposed for retention. The site is well-served by transit with major bus service and bikeways nearby. It is within eight hundred meters of five current and future subway stations. Jennison, Jonathan Rogers Park, community and cultural spaces, as well as restaurants and breweries are also located nearby. The site is located in the Mount Pleasant industrial area, area A. The plan permits mixed-use industrial and office buildings up to six F S R and up to eleven stories to intensify the traditional light industrial function of the area. Up to ten percent density can be added for heritage retention. It requires a minimum of three S S R of the floor space to be industrial. The industrial uses included mirror those of the I one zone. It also permits office and commercial users, which allow for a greater flexibility of uses and include childcare, retail or restaurant uses to provide additional amenities for the employees in the area. There are no residential uses permitted as per Metro Vancouver Land use designation for industrial lands. The application was submitted in December twenty twenty-three. It proposes two mixed-use buildings separated by a lane with industrial and office space and retail on the ground floor. The project will retain the Nelson's Laundry Heritage Building. It will also provide a privately owned public space and a thirty-seven space private childcare located in the Heritage Building. The applicant proposes a density of six point six two F S R. The buildings will have a height of ten and eleven stories. A virtual Q and A period was held with forty-five pieces of correspondence received. Comments of support were for the heritage retention, the visually appealing step design, the inclusion of childcare, the addition of much-needed industrial space close to great transit options, as well as the public courtyard. People commented that massing and design of the buildings are appropriate for the area. Concerns were related to the lack of industrial, industrial, residential use in the building. There was also concern about adding more office space given current vacancy in the area. Neighbors also feel that the buildings are too large despite the terracing too high and they cover too much of the site. The public benefits of this application consist of the commercial linkage fee, D C Ls, as well as a public art contribution with a value of about fourteen point six million dollars. In conclusion, this proposal aligns with the Broadway Plan and advances the city's need for more employment space, particularly for industrial uses. It also delivers a privately owned public space, private childcare and will retain the Heritage Building. Staff recommend approval subject to conditions outlined in appendix B of the report. Staff and the applicant team are available to answer questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Now, would the applicant team like to present the application if in attendance?
Thanks. Good evening, mayor and council. Uh, just for the staff's report, really quickly, just wanted to thank staff for their work with us on this ambitious, large-scale proposal that we think could be a strong, desirable anchor for a resurgent globally competitive Mount Pleasant, particularly serving innovation industries and industrial, urban industrial market segments. Um, we are seeking mayor and council's approval tonight of staff's recommendations as presented. However, we did want to highlight challenges with the currently applicable definition of allowable industrial uses that are to comprise approximately fifty percent of the developments area. Uh, staff committed to continue working with us on these allowable industrial uses to ensure sufficiently responsive to actual and anticipated market conditions and requirements of suitable businesses considering locating to Mount Pleasant. At present, limited allowable industrial uses, as currently defined, are seemingly insurmountable bear- barrier to project viability. Uh, as has been well documented, it remains a challenging commercial leasing market, particularly for office. However, we are optimistic that a development such as this will be an attractive globally competitive option, particularly for innovation industry uh, businesses that the city aspires to attract to Mount Pleasant. Our passing public hearing this evening would be important next step in allowing us to get out and try and secure the type of, uh, businesses uh, that the city desperately wants us to pursue in this area. Uh, generally, such businesses would not currently qualify for approximately fifty percent of proposed floor area that would be restricted for industrial uses. And there is little to no demand for such space above the ground floor for businesses that currently would qualify. As this relates to function-not-market environment, we do not expect to be able to overcome this without broadening of allowable industrial uses. We are hopeful this will be facilitated through ongoing considerations, either directly with staff on our application as tenant prospects are engaged, or more broadly through continuing Broadway Plan refinements, which we do want to greatly appreciate and support staff's continued efforts in refining, uh, policy as, as warranted. Uh, thank you for consideration of our application this evening and, and hopefully can count on your support. Thanks.
Thank you, uh, very much. Now, are there any questions from council to, um, our team members or the applicant team noting that this is the only opportunity for council to ask questions of the applicant? And councillor Claussen, you're up.
Yeah, thanks very much, mayor, and, uh, uh, thanks, uh, staff for the presentation and, uh, to the applicant for, uh, joining us in here tonight. Um, I thought I maybe start with the applicant and then maybe turn to staff. Just want to unpack a little bit about some of the market. Uh, we're very, uh, aware of the market conditions that exist right now. And we know that, uh, pure office and some of the industrial has been, uh, light industrial has been a little bit challenging, but maybe give me a little bit of a, 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 a sense of what kind of businesses that are currently prohibited and might, might be well-suited to the Mount Pleasant area.
I, I think, uh, the key point is it's really dealing with the fifty percent of the building that's allocated as industrial and, and the, uh, the definition of what qualifies as industrial use. And from our perspective, uh, there should be a broader case of allowable uses, particularly some in uses that are qualified as industrial uses in other places. Um, you, you hear the, uh, particularly, uh, digital media, uh, schools, technology-type uses, and then some of the uses that are very supportive of industrials, so daycare, uh, retail segments, fitness. Um, th- those aspects we feel should all be considered for inclusion with the industrial here.
Okay, thanks for that answer. Um, I might turn to staff next, but, um, we know that there has been some, um, amendments. Uh, for example, um, uh, on Marine Drive, there's a, a stacked industrial project down there and I think recently we saw, um, uh, uh, Con West project at the end of Hudson Street, getting some amendments for, uh, available uses. Um, what is, um, sort of staff's current view about allowable uses in this particular, uh, zone?
Let me backtrack a little bit because, um, we've been in conversations with the applicant and about the uses they want to add. And I want to be clear that the uses they want to add to the industrial portion are already allowed in their commercial portion. So fifty percent of what, uh, of the building already allows the uses they want to add. And staff has been adding, uh, industrial uses that are in the I one zone, which is a light industrial zone, and but it's still traditional industrial spaces. But because this is a, uh, a building that also goes on like higher floors, which is like not every industrial use can go on a higher floor. And this is a building that's more or less designed for services like lab, biotech, film production and so on, that can go on higher floors and not many industrial users can. So we are quite aware there is a restricted, um, markets, so to say, or restricted uses, but that's the purpose of this. And it's a, it's a quite small area of the city that has that very particular build form and very particular uses allowed. So, if, uh, anyone wants to add, okay.
Okay, thanks very much. Um, I, I know that, um, um, industrial, um, sort of broadly defined, uh, transportation access is kind of key, um, moving vehicles, sometimes larger vehicles, um, uh, i- in and out. Is this a site that will be well-suited to, to those conditions that would allow?
Yes, but it's not a heavy industrial site for exactly that purpose because it's in the middle of Mount Pleasant. So the really, really big trucks, um, what we call the class C trucks, the twenty-foot and longer trucks, they can access the site, but it's difficult. And so it's more ideal for users that don't need that. And that's typically what these, what we see in I one, uh, breweries and stuff. It's, it's smaller trucks and they have plenty of moving space there, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much for, uh, those questions. Thank you very much, councillor Kirby Young.
Uh, yeah, thanks. Just to follow up on that, uh, because you said there are allowable uses. I think what I'm hearing is the difficulty from the applicant in, um, sort of filling space at this point with the market conditions. But just to be clear, um, so it was more around the amount I, I'm thinking in flexibility of space versus allowable uses. But so you're saying it could fit into the commercial space, but that's only at, at, uh, ground floor, correct?
They are not limited to the ground floor per se, but it makes the most sense to have retail on the ground floor. If you think restaurant or cafes with like people walking by and there's the courtyard and that's a really nice addition. So they can add retail above it, but it makes more sense on the, on the ground.
Okay, but you don't typically see, when you say retail above, you, you don't typically see second-floor retail. You're thinking more like, um, retail kind of back-of-house operations, uh, prep as opposed to storefront kind of situation?
That can be, but as you know, Mount Pleasant is really nice with the breweries and there's a lot of restaurants and, and we are hoping for that more lively kind of retail, even though they are not restricted to that by any means. Um, but that's why the building is designed to have the courtyard and the courtyard goes over into the retail space. So there is a nice interaction. And then you have the childcare right next to it on the ground floor and above of the Heritage Building. So that kind of like would be a nice addition.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna switch a question to the applicant. Um, and it's on the heritage piece. And I would love to understand a little bit more, and I appreciate the, the, uh, retention of the heritage around what that process looks like in terms of what that, what sort of the, um, the obligations are, sort of the, the real-life impact of that on the project of keeping that component.
Yeah, then, thank you councillor Kirby, uh, for the ques- it, it's onerous. Uh, it's, it's a, it's a full retention. We, we think it's a really exciting element of the development. I, I, I think staff would, would agree that it really helps kind of, w- we think it's going to be a great anchor for the area, but, but again, it's another really onerous requirement that makes things like allowable uses that much more important.
Okay, um, but the actual, like, is it sort of essentially in this case, keeping the shell and the structure, but the inside is gutted? Is that?
No, no, it's gonna be full retention. So there'll be structure and, yeah, you know, it's, it's gonna be retained to a high standard.
Okay, um, I appreciate that. We have not seen that everywhere. Um, I'm gonna leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Maloney.
Um, I'm interested to, um, talk about where the parcade entrances and exits are. I can, I can see there's one on Third Avenue that's pretty obvious, but what about for, um, the other building?
They actually both are from the lane. So the proposal originally, um, proposed from Third Avenue, but we were concerned about pedestrian and bike safety. And so we had talks with the applicant and they agreed to move it, uh, to the lane. So both the Fourth Avenue and the Third Avenue, both have, um, exited one from the lane. Um, and, uh, we've, we've seen test fits and they're gonna apply for it at D P. And there is condition, conditioning it to have the parcade off the lane, not Third Avenue.
And, um, how do you see that? I just noting that Ontario Bike, Bike Way is their most significant north-south bike way. It's hugely busy. Um, what kind of precautions or measures have been taken to make sure that the building, um, won't interfere with the safety of cyclists?
The parcades are more on the side of Manitoba, so the, most of them will exit, uh, on Manitoba side. And it doesn't matter if it's the lane or third, like from that perspective, like the amount of cars would be the same. Um, there's no, um, there's a thought about and like it's been, uh, intended to be car-free, like Ontario on that side, at least half-block. Um, and there's gonna be car, um, uh, well, partial closure for cars, but it's not been definitive that it's gonna be closed. But the applicant is aware there are conditions to have off-site improvements to make it safe for, uh, bikes to cross that particular lane and, um, have some improvements to, for overall safety for everyone.
Fantastic. And what about, um, where, where are deliveries and removal vans and that kind of thing likely?
All on the lane.
All the lane?
Mm-hmm.
Fantastic. Thanks very much.
Great, thank you very much, councillor. Now, this is the second call for speakers. If there are any speakers, uh, for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll free at one eight three 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 five three eighty-six ten, followed by participant code one oh six one four four five pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be posted on X and made available on the live stream. We're now gonna hear from the public. Any registered speakers in the council chamber, please come forward to the podium when your name is called. Speakers will have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. And I do know we have registered speakers for this item. Uh, the first speaker we have is Gordon McCauley. Is Gordon on the line there?
I am. Can you hear me?
If you can hear you, great. Please go ahead.
Perfect. As, uh, thank you for the opportunity. As you said, my name is Gordon McCauley. I am a resident of Vancouver and I am speaking in support of this project as president and CEO of Admari Bio Innovations, also headquartered in Vancouver. We are currently building out labs and offices around the corner from this site at Quebec and Fifth. These new labs will add to the forty thousand square feet we already operate at U B C in Toronto and two hundred thousand square feet we operate in Montreal. Admari is Canada's company creation engine in the life sciences. We have been involved in creating thirty-seven companies that have attracted two and a half billion dollars of real risk capital, are worth five billion dollars today and employ about a thousand people. We operate in a sector that evolves quickly. Market conditions shift, technologies advance and disruption is the norm. In particular, at this moment, we are seeing the tariff impacts like everyone else and massive regulatory adjustments at N I H, F D A and broader health institutions in the U S that have a dramatic impact on our industry. Obviously, these, uh, developments mean that our space needs evolve rapidly, often in months, and in ways that are not easy to predict. We appreciate that P C I is designing their industrial space to be lab-capable, absolutely, with the infrastructure to support scientific use. That is very important to us. But just as importantly, I am hopeful that this space is somewhat flexible with the ability to scale into lab functions as needed. This feature is incredibly valuable for the growing companies in which we invest. One major element of change that we are seeing in our portfolio and across the world is the integration of technology and biology. This integration is also evolving rapidly and means that the proportionate needs for lab space and technology space are increasingly difficult to predict. Rigid zoning can limit our ability to grow or pivot and allowing for flexible uses within industrial zones give companies like ours the runway to scale operations, adjust lab or manufacturing footprints and partner with other sectors without needing to relocate. This includes tech uses, digital manufacturing, educational uses and so on. Mixed-use, well-connected developments attract and retain the talent that we rely on. Having office, retail, childcare and gathering space in proximity to innovative industrial space helps create the kind of ecosystem in which people want to work. In fact, these features are exactly why we, uh, are building in this area, because the needs of our employees demand it. Industrial demand today is not one size fits all. Forward-thinking projects like this one allow for a blend of light manufacturing, research and office, ensuring Vancouver's industrial lands stay productive and competitive across evolving sectors. Mount Pleasant is certainly becoming a hub for creative and tech-based industries. We see this project as a natural extension of that momentum, supporting not only biotech that we care a lot about, but a diverse economy built on innovation. I thank you for the opportunity to share these views. I appreciate the, uh, the public forum.
Great, thank you very much, um, Gordon. Uh, the next speaker we have is speaker number two, James Evans. James, are you on the line? Oh, awesome. Welcome.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, mayor and council. My name is, uh, James Evans. I'm a local resident. I'm also, excuse me, uh, the chair of the Vancouver Heritage Commission. Although I should add that I'm speaking in the capacity of my personal capacity as opposed to on behalf of the commission for this. Um, this application caught my eye because it's one of the actually early examples that we've seen in the Broadway corridor now where a proponent has been able to, I would argue successfully, uh, integrated heritage and, and a new building. Uh, I think it's, I think it's a good example. We've seen probably handful of them now. I think this is one of the first ones that we actually saw about six months ago. Um, having done a number of heritage projects myself, I know how difficult and challenging this can be. So I commend P C I for taking on the initiative. It won't be easy. Um, and I think it's important to try and, you know, as we go and we redevelop areas like Mount Pleasant and various other areas in the Broadway Plan, it's important to try and keep these little touchstones of the past, which is what P C I is proposing to do here. So, uh, again, I'd like to lend my support to this project and I hope that council and the mayor will approve it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming in. Speaker number three is withdrawn. Speaker number four is Blair Thomas Quinn.
Uh, good evening, mayor and council. Uh, my name is Blair Quinn, C B R E Vice Chairman for thirty-four years. I work in the commercial real estate sector and was an industrial broker when I started my career in Mount Pleasant, so know it very well. I've watched the area, uh, change from a service commercial to a tech life science and now a modern production success story. I, we were involved in bringing Hootsuite into the area, which was a major, major catalyst of change. And my team has been involved in several development sites uh, over the years, including the newest developments with Fifth and Columbia with, uh, Nicola, uh, Nic- Nicola, Nicola, well, thank you. Uh, Main Alley and the four buildings and the relic development, including P C I's new Alasko development. Uh, having the responsibility to lease out the industrial portions of these new developments, I have a firsthand experience of how few companies fit into the zoning, can afford the economics and can utilize the infrastructure improvements required by the city of Vancouver. So we reviewed seven recent developments, including eleven leases, and concluded that only three of these users, being Absellerah, Aspect and Rad Bikes, fit into the zoning without paying expensive consultants, taking long lead times, which has driven a lot of these modern tech companies to other cities like Richmond and Burnaby. So the balance of the tenants that have managed to fit into these areas, being the industrial portion that we're talking about today, include Lightform, which is a, a lighting showroom, Monos, which is a manufacturer, luggage manufacturer, uh, which does not do it on-site, Heritage Furniture and Other Showroom, uh, Vancouver Performing Stars, which is a child dance studio, Voto Safe, which is a sonar device for swimmers, effectively office space. Votosafe, which is a sonar device for swimmers, effectively office space, another studio, which is a photographer, Canfor's new head office, which is not a lumberyard. And then lastly, another contemporary office interiors, which is a second showroom. So the city requires the main floor of these developments, and now 50% of this new development, to have 17-foot ceilings, which none of these users have required. And if you drive around, and I'll give you the list, including Life Science. It's a misnomer that Life Science needs 17-foot. We've gone to San Francisco to see Amgen's brand-new state-of-the-art facility in 2023. And as a brand-new, first-in-class building, it was 14-and-a-half-foot ceilings. So effectively, none of these users fit into this 17-foot ceilings. Nobody's using it, having to heat it, including Zymworks, that's an M2. Admari, who was just speaking, is in 13-and-a-half-foot ceilings. So it's really wasteful. It has a big impact on the overall development economics because it eats into the GLA. It is, the uses, as Andrew and others have said, are way too limiting and they don't reflect what the new, modern user is looking for. And it makes it challenging for us to bring the users into the city of Vancouver. And lastly, like when you build these buildings, you're building over a parquet. So you're at 50-foot, 50-pound capacity, which means you can't load the floor height, so you don't really ever need it. It's not what today's modern industrial, or better yet, production companies looking for. So my opinion is that while Life Science hits the mark and it's a fantastic industry to grow, it's also very small and we have to look beyond it. We have to look at what the future requirements needs. And I fully appreciate your need and want to preserve industrial stock and future-proof new developments. But if we're not future-proofing it for today's user, then what is the point? Thank you for your time. Any questions?
No, we don't ask questions at this point.
Okay.
Thanks, Blair. Oh, yeah, that's right, public hearing. Any questions? All these different types of meetings, I'm still getting the hang of it here. All right, speaker number five is Chris Macaulay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Chris Macaulay. I'm a resident of Vancouver and I'm an Executive Vice President, CBRE, specializing in industrial real estate. I have over 20 years of experience in this sector. I commend the city's desire and seeking to preserve industrial uses and I previously collaborated with Metro Vancouver on this important matter. Today, I'd like to address the current challenges facing industrial users, developers, and city of Vancouver itself. The city's intention to mandate a specific percentage of industrial space within the development projects in Mount Pleasant area, I believe, stems from a desire to provide options for existing industrial users within Vancouver. Past reports have indeed highlighted the need of industrial land within the city. However, a critical element that appears to be absent from these reports and the associated design requirements is a comprehensive understanding of what truly supports the operational needs of industrial users. The primary focus for the majority of traditional industrial users, whether in distribution, manufacturing, or food processing, is the efficient movement of goods. This fundamentally differs from office and retail environments where the focus is on the movement of people. Unfeathered access is paramount for effective goods movement. Proposition of second, third, or even fourth-floor industrial space introduces significant challenges related to accessibility. Two principal issues arise with multi-level industrial spaces. Firstly, access is typically controlled by elevators, which would be shared among multiple users, inevitably causing delays in the movement of goods. Secondly, any elevator malfunction or scheduled maintenance would render the space unusable for goods movements, incurring having industrial users incur substantial cost and potential disruption business. Faced with these logistic hurdles, industrial users are likely to seek more conventional alternatives, even if it necessitates locating outside the city's boundaries. To illustrate this point, I analyzed industrial lease transactions in Vancouver, and all of Vancouver, East Vancouver, South Vancouver, Mount Pleasant area, over the past 24 months. Out of the 52 transactions, over half are attributed to non-traditional industrial uses such as technology, retail, recreational, and automotive. Of the remaining tenants, 16 required dock loading for the much larger trucks, leaving fewer than 10 occupiers over a two-year period who might conceivably function in a non-ground floor space. It is critical to note, though, that theoretical ability to operate on a second floor does not equate to willingness to do so, given the aforementioned operational risks. Finally, I'd like to address the size of industrial occupiers in Vancouver. Over the past two years, the average transaction size of these occupiers was approximately 8,000 square feet. Vancouver's industrial base has historically been comprised of these small and medium-sized businesses. Integrating these businesses into large-scale, multi-level projects presents challenges. Subdividing such spaces efficiently to provide adequate loading access while maintaining safe employee access is often not possible and extremely costly. Therefore, I respectively submit that the city needs to adopt a flexible approach regarding the types of uses permitted beyond the ground floor in this development, as well as design specifications that are better suited to the type of companies that are wanting to locate in the Mount Pleasant area. We encourage the city to trust the expertise of developers and industry professionals who are best positioned to design projects that will attract a diverse range of companies, provide complementary uses to the surrounding area, and ultimately contribute to the job creation within Vancouver. Thank you for your time.
Great. Thanks, Chris. Speaker number six, Neil Wiles. Neil, are you on the line?
I am. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Great. Please go ahead.
Excellent, excellent. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Neil Wiles. I'm with the Mount Pleasant BIA. I'm speaking to you tonight in support of the development and rezoning of Five West Fourth Avenue and 36 West Third. This area has seen incredible changes over the past few years, like this development. Older industrial and semi-industrial buildings are being converted or renovated into more contemporary uses for today's economy and workplace. It reminds me of the early days of Yaltown. I was in Yaltown in the mid-'90s. Places like Nelson's Linen Commercial Supply warehouses and Light Industrial are giving way to interesting restaurants, breweries, retail, and some small-scale commercial businesses. At last count, I think there are over 30 development applications for residential buildings in the area. With this level of density increase, we'll also need to see an increase in places for people to work. Although just outside of the BIA district boundaries, any commercial developments that go on in the area affect Mount Pleasant BIA in a positive way. The increased number of people and traffic to support the existing businesses in the MPBIA cannot be understated. With the soon-to-be-open Mount Pleasant Broadway Line Station, Main and Broadway will become a hub for everyone coming into the area. I would be remiss if I didn't mention the number of bike lanes that run through the area. This building is perfectly situated to meet the mixed modal requirements and style of today's workforce. I'm going to go a little off-script, just because I'm hearing about the industrial requirements. I would add my voice to giving this development some flexibility. I recognize, I've seen the types of businesses that have come into this area, come into the larger area. I think over the longer term, we're going to see more of a connection between the Olympic Village and Mount Pleasant. And I don't think this has ever been a factory area and I don't think you're going to make it into one. I think that this development needs some flexibility in order to do what they need to do and increase the vitality of this area. And I do want to add, I love that they're retaining as much of the old Nelson's building and the signage as possible. In a city of only 117 square kilometers, we can ill afford to let land sit without action. So I do support this rezoning and development. And I too would ask for some flexibility in how this looks going forward. I mean, we're seeing some changes in some of the existing large-scale tenants like Hoot Suites in the area, and I think that we need to make sure that we are open to those changes. At some point, this was called Mount Pixel. I don't know if that ever has materialized. I think it was somebody's desire to see all of the Disney and all those folks come in here. I'm not sure that that's ever materialized in such a way. So it's constantly changing and we need to make sure that we're leaving ourselves room in there to make these changes without any long delays. Thank you very much for your time and letting me speak. Have a great night.
Great. Thank you very much. So this is the third and final call for speakers. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free at 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be posted on X and made available on the live stream. If there are any additional speakers in the council chamber, please come forward to the podium. Clerk, do we have anyone online waiting? Sorry? Yep. Oh.
The time start? Is it, has it already started? Or I can't see anything?
Oh, we will start it now.
So for this project, hi, sorry, hello. The square meter edge is 44,560. Required trees by bylaw, in simple math, is 856 trees. There are none currently on the site. We understand that. But they're proposing 72 more. That's the but in the thing, like, ooh, 72 more. I have a question, if it can be asked through council to staff or whatnot. Like, how many of the 72 proposed are actually on, are on top of the roof that are not accessible to the public? Because then I think you guys have absolute authority, at least with like 50% of all of the public realm, like all of the plans, Broadway Plan, Vancouver Plan. I haven't read them as much, but like, public realm is like, if you want to talk about it in film terms, like it's the arts of motion picture and sound. Like, motion picture is 50% and sound is 50%. There's all kinds of things that fit in motion, in the visual, sorry. Obviously, the art and all that stuff, but sound is so, so important. So just, let's start with that. We're going on a film thing here. 18% is an interesting percentage too. So, sorry, 72 trees, if they're even equitably distributed for public. It's only 18% of that 856. So the canopy, and the other thing that you guys have authority over those documents, the urban forestry strategy, like your guys' goal is 25% canopy. I'm doing a simple calculation, I know. Like, oh, just counting the number of trees. We don't know what we're planning yet. Like, we'd love to see that in the plans. But that's not even reaching the urban forestry strategy for Vancouver, which is below what people even suggest should be for us in a climate crisis on the North Pacific West. I'm new here, so sorry, but you know where we are. We're all standing here. On this side, in the climate crisis, people recommend 40% canopy in the future. So we're talking about the future. You're building new things here. Everything's going to be for the future benefit of all of us. And, yeah, in the principles for council, you know, number seven, healthy, inclusive, and equitable. That's number seven. Housing's number two. We're hitting all the... I saw, I was watching something the other day and I saw Friends on the 1, 2, hit 7, 7, 3. Off-topic, I know, but I have time. Yeah, anyways, I think I've made my point. I really do think that you guys all individually have the authority to vote no on this referral. Like they said, like, the things that they want to do with the industrial part, they don't need to change the rezoning for that. And what's interesting about the film studio part, I'm sorry, I just finished a decade-long career in film and it's the least sustainable industry in the world. I love it. I'm trying to get back into it because I'm maybe of a, you know, tortured sense, starving artist. But it's not sustainable. People don't live there. I can't afford the houses in this city or live or eat because of it. So if that's what you want to build in terms of sustainability, and plus, it wasn't always like that, right? Like Ingmar Bergman had a film studio, if you're talking about places where you can do film, where it was based on nature. It was based on planting that greenery. And that's, where else would you want to be to make art than in art, which is nature? Like, it's like, I know we have digital things now. Part of the reason I don't have a job. So if you want to plant real trees, I'll be there to plant them. I think we can at least get the 18, like 18% of what the bylaw asks for. So like, why not, I'm a green kid, you know? Why not ask for 100% because that's your public realm? Also, that's the thing that you're trading off, like in terms of what you guys can provide in terms of public amenity. I know you guys just get the, it's different. It's just the borders here. But like, let's ensure that those 72 trees then are on the city thing. And then be planting that many. Just try.
Thank you very much. Clerk, do we have any one online in the chamber? Okay, so we're now going to take a five-minute recess for any additional speakers to come forward to the podium. Nope. Okay, so we're now gonna take a five-minute recess, uh, for any additional speakers to come forward to the podium. Okay, let me, uh, just take.
I'll move the recommendations with the yellow memo.
Oh, hold on a sec, um, where are we here? Um. I'll get there in one sec, okay, so, did we receive any additional public comments since the close of public comments?
No.
Okay, uh, I'd like to remind council that we will need to move the recommendation for item one together with the yellow memo dated May the fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, entitled CD dash one rezoning, four, uh, through thirty-six, West Third Avenue, and five, West Fourth Avenue. Council will now make its decision on the application, we do have a mover, which was councillor Kirby Young, and a seconder, who was Mike Clot, um, sorry, councillor Claussen. Uh, council, is there any discussion, so councillor Claussen, do what, are you in the queue for?
I, I am, um, sorry.
I think just procedurally, I'm on the queue to move and speak to it, that's usually how we go.
Okay.
I'll, I'll turn mine off here.
I'm gonna advance councillor Claussen, councillor Kirby Young, you're up.
Awesome, thank you. Um, yeah, I, I appreciate the, uh, the dialogue and the conversation tonight, and I think council are listening intently, uh, with the, uh, sort of realities that have been raised around industrial, um, and I think we'll definitely take that away. Um, ironically, I think I'm, we're also hearing other feedback, uh, around projects in the Mount Pleasant area that are suggesting similar challenges with office, that are suggesting potentially mixed use in this area, so, there's sort of different themes that are emerging, I think, that we're hearing, um, given the economic realities in the city and the challenges, um, with officing or with zoning in specific locations. I, I think with this one, it's important to note that council has sort of a framework within which to make this decision, and a lot of the feedback that we hear at public hearings, I find, can often help inform potential future policy updates. But if we make, uh, there's, we do have to sort of thread the needle between making decisions at a public hearing, in my mind, that change materially, um, change a project and how it was put forward, or the standard, or the policy to which it has to submit under, relative to the impact that, of other projects that may come forward, so. All that to say, I'm very keenly aware of the changing nature of industrial, I'm aware of the challenges there. Definitely taking that feedback away, I don't think personally this is the forum tonight to make those changes in. Um, but it is very helpful to hear, uh, from the applicant, as well as from some of the sector experts that have a lot of expertise here, because it sort of adds to critical mass, I think, in my mind, that council's hearing around uh, potential future changes and conversations that may or may not be warranted around some of those challenges, so, heard loud and clear. But I will say on this, um, particular project, and I happened to be walking, the other day, I've been walking Mount Pleasant a lot lately, and came by the site and stopped and read the development boards with some interest, and was sort of visualizing what it looked like. Um, and I'm super happy to see the retention of Nelson's Laundry, or Dominion, I think it's named, it's two different names in this report. Because Mount Pleasant has such a unique character in that area, and I think that's what people really love about it, so, the neighborhood is changing. Um, it's natural, it is changing, it should change, uh, but it has kind of a heart and a beat that I think people want to see some of that soul left there, so, it's not always an easy path to hoe in terms of heritage retention, and I appreciate that, we hear from the applicant that it certainly has its, um, kind of, um, impact in terms of what that means for project, but it's so worth it, in my opinion, to retain some of that sense of place in our city, and we're not a particularly old city, we don't have a lot of it, and so, I think that's why people reacted so strongly to when you saw things like the, what appeared to be, I'll choose my words, what appeared to be a, um, indiscriminate loss of Dunsmere House and other components, so. I do all, want to applaud applicants when they come forward and they make the effort to do that, and, uh, appreciated the spelling out that it's not just the exterior facade and the walls, but it's some of the interior that is being retained as well, and I think that that's gonna make for a, a very attractive development, but I'll just say, thanks for that, it's great to see another childcare opportunity here, and I will support it, but we will take away, um, definitely, a lot of the feedback that we're hearing around industrial, because that's the policy, I think, that will continue to evolve over time, thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Claussen.
Yeah, thanks very much, mayor, uh, thanks, uh, tonight for a presentation from staff, and, um, and for the applicant to come in, and to bring those additional voices, I, I'm kind of like councillor Kirby Young, I was shopping at M E C a little, and was walking park near there, and actually looked at development board, and kind of stopped and tried to imagine what was coming, so I'm excited to see it here today. Um. I can, uh, I must admit, is that, as a councillor, I sort of say, we have a, um, a, a passing knowledge of about a thousand different things in this role. And one of the things that I've been really trying to seek out is a better understanding, is first of all, the markets, is certainly around commercial real estate and industrial. It's been one of, a, a thread of conversations we've been having, and so, to hear experts from CBRE in the, in the, in the chamber here tonight is very helpful. Uh, and, and like councillor Kirby Young, I agree, this is not the forum necessarily for us to deliberate on that one, but I think the information is useful, it's useful for our staff to hear, and useful for council to hear. Web Summit is coming here next week, uh, an opportunity for, I think, uh, a, a strong growth of our, our tech sector here, we know that we have several key players in the tech sector that are already, uh, in that Mount Pleasant area, I'd love to see a lot more of them. Uh, but they, obviously, if, you know, when we're hearing that they're going to, to Burnaby and Richmond, and no knock on our sisters, or, or neighboring cities, but I, um, I would like it if those companies, uh, would be operating here in Vancouver, I think that this is very desirable, we're seeing all the growth in residential that's happening in the area as well, we're seeing Great Northern Way and, and Olympic Village, and there's just so many things happening in this area right now, uh, that I think are gonna be very attractive, uh, for people working in the tech sector in its many forms. I'm also very delighted, uh, to see the, the heritage retention and respect for that. I always like it when James Evans comes in, I'm the council liaison to the Heritage Commission, so, I always like it when James comes in, because he's, uh, he's been a really strong advocate for, uh, for supporting and retaining heritage as we can. Um, uh, so, uh, that's the, the, the gist of my comments here, I just think, uh, there's some really interesting-looking design and buildings starting to come into this industrial, or industrial, into this kind of work area, um, of Mount Pleasant. And, uh, I certainly think this will add to that, um, uh, the ground-level sort of area for, for access for, uh, for people is a really lovely part of this design as well, so, I, I'm very happy to support it and look forward to, uh, hopefully seeing shovels in the ground at some time, uh, not too distant future, thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Meisner.
Yeah, thanks, mayor, um, I just wanted to say, uh, kudos to the applicant, to the architect, and to city staff for guiding them, uh, through a process which I think has resulted in a, what seems like a great response to this site. Um, I also particularly like the heritage retention, this is a really, uh, prominent building, uh, on that bike route there, on Ontario. And I really also, um, think that the approach with the courtyard and the retail and the childcare, uh, is gonna turn out fantastic, so. Uh, we're looking forward to supporting this, uh, project tonight, and again, I think it's, uh, kudos to everybody involved, because I think it's gonna be great.
Thank you very much, councillor Dominado.
Uh, thank you, mayor, and, um, echoing the comments of my colleagues, I think you'll hear a similar theme. Um, really appreciate, uh, the attention to detail around this proposal, and particularly, um, obviously achieving multiple goals of addressing office, but also, um, maintaining industrial in the area. Um, others have referenced the childcare inclusion, um, but also, um, like, my colleague councillor Claussen, I'm liaison to the Heritage Foundation, and, um, the retention of the heritage of the Nelson's Laundry at the site. Um, and it reminded me, um, much of a, a project, uh, previously approved and that's fully built out, which is the Con West project that had the, um, preservation of a nineteen oh-one, uh, home, and, uh, in the Mount Pleasant industrial area, and I, and I really appreciate the innovation and creativity. Um, and I rarely comment on, um, built form. Um, uh, I don't have an architectural background of any kind, but, um, when I saw this, I, with the renderings, I actually think it's, um, quite a beautiful building, and the design, and, so, we talked about all the inclusion of all of those amenities in terms of, um, office and industrial and childcare and heritage, but um, I actually think it's a really nice design, um, and I think it'll add, um, value to the area, and I think it'll be something that people enjoy actually visiting and seeing, and so, uh, suffice to say, um, I'm happy to support, uh, the, um, application, but, um, did want to comment on that, I think it's, it's actually a very nice design, so, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bly.
Uh, thanks very much, and, um, I am hearing my colleagues' comments, and I reflect much of the same, so I won't repeat, other than to say, uh, thank you to the speakers, and, um, as was mentioned, always good to hear, uh, James Evans, um, who is a, a staunch advocate for heritage in our city, and, um, and also to the applicant for bringing forward what, to me, looks like a real vision that's been held, um, uh, perhaps for some time, so. Happy to support, and, and just, uh, a good and healthy discussion and debate and commentary around the changing um, nature of industrial in our city, and I think it's an important, uh, conversation to be had, particularly in this area, as far as historical industrial uses go. I would say that this fits in a modern twenty-first century context, so. Um, look forward to further discussions there, but again, thanks very much to the applicant, staff, and to the speakers for lending their voice, I'd be happy to support.
Thank you very much. Okay. Um, I'm now gonna call the vote, can you please take us to the voting panel, and council, can you please register your votes?
Mayor, is councillor Joel here, can, can I take a vote assist in favor, please?
Absolutely, thank you. And that passes unanimously. Congrats and thanks, team, for all the hard work you've done on that. Okay, the next item on the agenda is number two, CD dash one rezoning, twenty-one eighty, West Sixth Avenue. Now, before we begin this agenda item, does anybody, uh, believe they have a conflict of interest, if they do? Uh, please, uh, feel free to, uh, declare it. All right, seeing none, uh, the clerk is now gonna read the application and summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by Franzel Architecture to rezone twenty-one eighty, West Sixth Avenue, from R M dash four Residential District to CD dash one Comprehensive Development District, to permit the development of a twenty-four-story mixed-use building containing one hundred and sixty-six rental units, with twenty percent of the residential floor area for below-market rental units, commercial space on the ground floor, and an in-kind thirty-seven space childcare facility. A floor space ratio of seven point seven six, and a height of seventy-nine point six meters, or two hundred and sixty-one feet, with additional height for rooftop amenity space are proposed. The general manager, planning, urban design, and sustainability recommends approval, subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation. The following correspondence has been received since referral to the public hearing. Thirty-three pieces of correspondence in support, fourteen pieces of correspondence in opposition, and one piece of correspondence dealing with other aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to four P M. today.
Great, thank you very much, now, this is the first call for speakers, any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council? Uh, please call toll-free at one eight-three-three-three-five-three-eighty-six-ten, followed by participant code one oh-six-one-four-four-five-pound, um, before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be posted on X and made available on the live stream. There will be an opportunity for new speakers and missed speakers to be added to the end of the registered speakers list. Now, we do have team members, uh, from planning, urban design, and sustainability here to present the application.
I don't have a ability to share screen at the moment, if I could, may I make that permission?
And sorry, can we get your name again?
Daniel Fini, rezoning planner.
Thank you.
Oh, I have the, the option now. Okay. Good evening, mayor and council, my name is Daniel Fini, and I'm the planner for this rezoning application being considered under the Broadway Plan. Apologize, my slides are not advancing. Still no dice, bear with me, apologies. Okay. Sorry about that, um, jump to the next slide. The site in red is located on West Sixth Avenue between Arbutus and U Streets. The surrounding context consists of residential with commercial uses located along Arbutus Street to the east, and West Fourth Avenue to the north. The neighborhood is undergoing significant change with the new Broadway subway line located to the south. The site currently consists of a three-story apartment building with thirty tenancies. Twenty-six of the thirty tenancies are eligible for tenant protection under the tenant relocation and protection policy. The site is well-served by transit with the future Arbutus Skytrain station, bus service, and bikeways nearby. Several parks, schools, childcare facilities, and community spaces are also located in the area. The proposal is located within the Quetzalano North Area A subarea of the Broadway Plan. The plan permits twenty-story market residential buildings with twenty percent of the residential floor area secured at below-market rates. The maximum density is six point five F S R. Minor increases in height and density can be considered for the delivery of ground-level retail or service uses. Further increases in height and density can also be considered for the delivery of in-kind amenities such as a public childcare facility. This application for a 24-story mixed-use building with a four-story podium was submitted in April 2024. The application proposes 166 rental units with 20% of the floor area secured at below-market rates. A ground-level commercial retail unit is also included. The proposed height is 261 feet with a density of 7.76 FSR. A 37-space in-kind childcare facility located on Level 5 is also proposed. Lastly, parking and loading is from the lane. The proposed 24 stories is above the plan's permitted maximum. However, the height is considered an appropriate urban design response, given the delivery of the commercial space and in-kind childcare facility. Additionally, as part of the landscape plan, a number of mature trees are proposed to be retained within the northeast corner of the site. Public realm improvements such as new sidewalks, street trees, laneways and street lighting are also included within the conditions of approval. This table is a comparison between the below-market and market rental. Showing red dashes, this application is providing below-market rents that are 20% below CMHC citywide average rents. Eighty-five submissions were received during the public engagement period. Comments of support were for the proposed childcare facility, increased rental stock and locating density close to a future Skytrain station and their Arbutus Bike Way. Concerns were related to the proposed height being too tall for the area, impacts to solar access and public views, and whether the proposal would overwhelm local amenities and infrastructure. In response, staff note that the proposed height is above the plan's maximum. However, as previously outlined, the height is considered an appropriate urban design response, given the delivery of the commercial space and in-kind childcare facility. Additionally, higher-density building forms are supported close to rapid transit and conditions of approval have been added to ensure a more sensitive interface to the neighbours and help reduce potential overlook. Staff have also determined that the proposal is consistent with the plan's solar access requirements and the site is not located within a protected view corridor. In terms of addressing growth, future amenities will be delivered through the plan's public benefits strategy. In addition, a storm sewer upgrade is required to facilitate this development if approved. The public benefits are the secured market and below-market rental units as well as the in-kind childcare facility. There's also a DCL and public art contribution estimated at over $2.78 million. The applicant is seeking a citywide DCL waiver valued at $3.1 million. The site was subject to a CAC review and staff determined that the below-market rental units and in-kind childcare facility offset the land lift and no further CAC is required. In conclusion, this proposal aligns with the Broadway Plan and advances the city's rental housing targets by delivering 166 rental units with below-market rental housing. The proposal also provides much-needed childcare space. Staff recommend approval subject to the conditions in appendix B of the report and staff and the applicant team are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Daniel. Would the applicant team like to present the application?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Colin Wall. Mayor, councillor, thank you for your time. I'd also like to thank staff for your overview. Daniel already went over a lot of the details of the project, so I thank him for that. But I would also like to add my own information of the project. My grandmother, Charlotte Wall, has owned and operated this three-story wood-framed apartment building that's rental for 55 years, since 1969. And her and I, together with Holybush Holdings, would very much like to continue being a strong presence in the Kitsellano community and to create something that is new, but still Kitsellano. At the essence, Kitsellano is a place to raise families and to... It's just where it's the area I grew up in and I want to keep it that way, but still move with the times and what we need. This is not only a project for the city, but for us. It's a family project and it will continue to be that. Not only the things that Daniel laid out, but the below-market rentals, we want to actually focus on the three and two bedrooms to bring those below, not the one bedroom. So it's easier for families with children that can maybe use the daycare as well. It's just more accessible that way. And I won't let you guys down and I won't let the city of Vancouver and Kitsellano down with what we do. Oh, I'd like to just thank everyone for their time. And I'd also like to say that my team, I have Jose Gonzalez here, we also have Julian Leisure and we have Mia Sidran on line, I believe. And they will be taking any of the questions, or I will if I can, that you guys have. Thank you so much and hope you all have a good night and day.
Thank you, Colin. Are there any questions from councillor to our team members or the applicant team noting that this is the only opportunity for councillor to ask questions of the applicant? And councillor Meisner, you're up.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor, and thanks to the applicant staff for the presentation. I just had a question around retail. I don't think there's a ton of retail currently in this area. So I'm curious as to what sort of retail tenant do you envision being in the space and how that might interact with the childcare that's up on the fifth floor.
Thank you for your question, councillor. I would actually direct that question to the applicant just in terms of the tenant prospects that they have in mind. So I would pass the question over to the applicant.
Thanks.
I believe Julian, our lead architect, would be the best at answering that question. I believe he should be online.
I'm online. Hello, everyone. Julian Ajayi from Frankel Architecture. The vision here is to provide amenities not only to the neighbourhood, but also to the building itself, such as maybe a little bakery, a coffee shop or those kind of services that create a little local community.
Okay, that's good to hear. So it would be fitted out for potentially a food service type thing, like a coffee shop or bakery?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'm glad to hear that. We need more of that in the city. So appreciate that response. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Maloney.
I'd like to hear a little bit about the tenant relocation process. So there are 30 rental homes, 26 are eligible for relocations under the Broadway Plan. Could you just run me through what the process has been so far and how many of the people living in the building you feel are likely to return to the building? And whether they'll get the discounted units, perhaps?
So Mia, are you able to answer?
I just want to jump in really quickly. Sorry, Julian. We do have our housing planner on call, Emily Booker. She's a colleague within the housing team, so she'll be able to provide an overview of the TRP process. Thank you, Daniel.
Thanks, Daniel. Emily Booker here. Yeah, I wasn't sure if that question was directed to staff or the applicant. But yeah, we do have 26 eligible tenants and they would be eligible to return to the new building at a unit size appropriate to their unit household. And yeah, maybe the applicant could kind of fill in on their process so far, but they've been working closely with us and they've completed all of the requirements so far for the TRP.
Yeah, I would like to hear from the applicant as to how that process is going.
Hello, this is Mia Sidran speaking. I'm head of planning and operations for Holybush Apartments, including property management of the existing building and our tenant relocation and protection plan, which we developed based on the city of Vancouver tenant relocation and protection plan and policy for Broadway area. And over this last year, we followed all of the steps that were required and went even beyond. We approached the issue of tenant relocation with the most care and compassion because we understand that this will be a transition for many of our tenants. So far, we also met with most of the tenants and talked to them one-on-one. And it seems at the moment that all of our tenants would like to come back to the new building, which we are so happy to hear and our goal is to welcome them back. They will be coming back to the new building. Their rents will be either their rents they're paying now currently or 20% below market rents at that time, whichever is less.
And what kind of arrangements have been made for them during the construction process? Are they able to find places in homes in the area or are they struggling with that? Do you know that?
So we are working with our tenants closely. Around half of our tenants asked us to help them find alternative accommodation. Other half feel that they can do it themselves, but we, of course, are there to help. For the tenants who requested assistance, we will be offering three options that are based on their needs and preferences, that we are learning what they are through all of this process, through the surveys and talking to people one-on-one. We do potentially see some challenges, but we are trying to face slowly. And you know, some of our tenants already moved out because of their other plans in their life. So we have about seven tenants that we already compensated. And it seemed to me that all of them, it was easy to find place in the area or they moved elsewhere anyways because that was their plan due to work or some family situation. So we are monitoring the situation. We are exploring options already, keeping this process already very open and active.
Thanks for taking the time to explain that to me. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Okay, this is the second call for speakers. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to councillor, please call toll-free at 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound. Before the close of the speakers list, the phone number will be posted on X and made available on the live stream. We're now going to hear from the public. Any registered speakers in the council chamber, please come forward to the podium when your name is called. Speakers will have up to five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. And it looks like we do have some speakers. Speaker number one, Louis Villegas. Louis, oh, there we go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councillor. My name is Louis Villegas. I'm a Vancouver resident and urban design specialist with 44 years' experience. Next slide, please. I oppose this tower in the Broadway Corridor Tower Plan because every tower approved by government perpetuates the housing affordability crisis, destroying families, neighbourhoods and the middle class. Next slide, please. It is a fallacy that by increasing the housing stock, government will drive prices down. Land is the commodity in short supply, not towers. Next. Economists agree that the increase in the cost of houses and apartments is all in the land. Next. Condos on the red line are priced 75% over median household incomes, shown by the green dotted line at the bottom. It is inconceivable how government pegging rents at 20% below market pretends to deliver unaffordability. Government is either lying to the people or ignorant of the facts. Corruption or stupidity, you decide. What industry insiders call land lift is one of two major causes of the housing crisis. Next slide. To end the housing crisis, government must add land, not towers. Next slide, please. Insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and yet expecting a different result. Next slide. The Broadway Corridor Plan, the Jericho Tower Plan, the Camby Corridor Plan, government is building corridors instead of protecting our neighbourhoods. Next. Government must end the housing crisis by A, preserving the neighbourhoods, B, building towers downtown, and C, building LRT streetcar into the neighbouring regions where crown land is in abundance to build gap, guaranteed affordable houses in perpetuity. Next slide, please. The housing crisis is a land lift crisis made in this chamber. Next slide. Skytrain is a second major cause of the housing affordability crisis. Building just 80 kilometres in 40 years, the abysmal low rate of building an average of just two kilometres of transit per year means that people can't go to places where crown land is available for building gap in quantities sufficient to meet or exceed all demand. Clearly, this cannot pass for good urbanism. Next slide, please. There is the bad urbanism right there. The cumulative ill effects of crowding and other bad urban design decisions are either not understood or are being ignored by professionals working for a government captured by the development industry. Next. Government giving away concessions to developers at every opportunity raises serious questions about the state of our society. Next. We are at an inflection point. We can either have extreme wealth inequality with toxic divisions and corruptions required to make it thrive, including a government-made crisis in housing affordability, or we can have a fair economy for all the people, along with the democracy and freedoms necessary to uphold it. Every one of us must choose oligarchy or democracy, but we can't have both. Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez. Next slide, please. In the remaining time, I just thought I would put up a sampling of projects that I've built. What I'm talking about is not theory, it's praxis. It's theory and practice. I've done these projects, I've done neighbourhoods, I've done districts that did not include towers and were very successful and very profitable. We have choices. You have to think out of the box. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Great, thank you very much. The next speaker is speaker number two, Stephen Bohas.
Thank you, Mayor and councillor, for your time. My name's Stephen Bohas. I'm a renter. I work in South Granville and I live in Vancouver. I'm opposed to this proposal for a number of reasons. Right here, you're seeing a rezoning sign in front of yet another mature rental building. If passed tonight and if the next item passes, this will bring the total number of units that would be redeveloped under the Broadway Plan of Mature Rentals to 498 since November of 2024. I'm counting the next presentation as well in that. Next slide. We've got a lovely building here. This is the kind of rental stock that we want to protect. If voting for this essentially creates demeasurement, displacement, a lot of human suffering, and it's really the worst part of the Broadway Plan and it should be addressed. Next slide. I'm going to go back to a rezoning, I think, passed in 2019. Some members of this council might recall this. There was a building in Mount Pleasant, 1940 Main Street, six stories, oh, 37-space childcare facility valued at $4.7 million in-kind CAC. What's happened to that? Well, nothing's happened because the project became stalled. That 49-unit strata never got built with the six-story form and you have no childcare. So a really big mistake was made here by the city by not demanding a bond for the amount of the childcare in kind that you could cash. Let's say in a couple of years, if the project does not get underway. I think that is a lesson that could be applied to this rezoning and maybe other rezonings that have childcare requirements because you'll just lose any promises of future childcare if you don't have a bond or any sureties there. Next slide. Here is the site across the property line on the other side of the block, another mature rental building. It's going through DP. I think some of the residents might start be moving out. And there's a lot of cumulative impact on solar, on people being displaced. And there's actually no laneway between the two and the Broadway Plan says you need a laneway, not a laneway dedication. Next slide. I modeled this up right there when the open house started of the initial scheme, front and centre. And you can see the distance and the proximity to the rezoning. And you can see the distance and the proximity to the rezoning that was approved uh last year and I believe in November. And there's not a lot of light there on uh West Six. So uh what kind of communities? Every single one of these sites has either been approved, is has been referred or is uh, you know, going through the rezoning process. And every single site has a mature rental building. So these are the easy targets to go after renters and to displace them, and it's not very equitable. Next slide. This is a future build-out scenario under your amended Broadway Plan and I, that I mocked up along with Brian and Pomquist, helped to look at developable sites, many of them on rental buildings. And this is what we could be looking at. Next slide. Uh, I wanted to step back and look at the pace of change policy that this council was looking at earlier uh this term. And uh, this was part of the Broadway Plan that there would be a pace of change policy and uh council adopted uh a position of having no pace of change. I mentioned that so far there are four hundred and ninety-eight units since uh November of last year uh that are purpose-built rentals. Uh, there are of course more secondary rentals, like, you know, the final unit, uh final item tonight and uh elsewhere, but I'm just looking at purpose-built. And and already you're, you'd be reaching the five hundred and fifty uh units per year threshold. There, so a pace of change policy, if you're not going to do anything about protecting mature rentals, look at the pace of change policy. Uh, next slide. And that there was strong uh industry opposition to that, uh and it wasn't passed. Next slide. And and to to wrap up, uh apart from looking at amending the Broadway Plan and really looking at, you know, the worst aspects of the demovictions and the displacement and really the waste of uh demolishing perfectly good buildings, uh I I made a suggestion about having a guarantee of childcare as a bond that could be cashed if the project does not go ahead. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, the next speaker is uh Akun uh Kiote or Coyote. Are you on the line? Nope, okay. Uh, speaker number four has withdrawn. Uh, speaker number five, Daniel O- uh Akosa. Is Daniel there?
I'm here, Mayor.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak this evening, I'm very grateful. My name's Daniel, I'm a young Vancouverite, UBC student, and someone who spent the last few years working in housing policy, tenant advocacy, advocacy, and recently in public service. And I'm here to lend my voice and strong support for this application. To me and to a lot of other young people in the city, this proposal and many like it is more than just a building. It's about whether the ci- city is serious, truly serious, about building a future for everyone, not just those who are lucky enough to have arrived decades ago. Not that I need to repeat this for anybody in the room, but just to restate, this project will deliver over one hundred and fifty much-needed secure rental homes with twenty percent set aside for below-market rates. A thirty-seven space childcare center, which especially according to our neighbors, are desperately needed, and the ground-level retail, creating a more walkable, servage- service-rich neighborhood and business opportunities for people in our community. It's being built near transit, built near jobs, near schools, near businesses, and within an area already designated for this kind of thoughtful growth under the Broadway Plan. Some will say it's too tall, too dense, too disruptive. I would counter that respectfully. What's more disruptive is the crisis that we're all living where nurses in the city that we desperately need are commuting from the valley, where students are literally living out of their cars, and where a generation of young people have given up on the dream of calling the city home. That is the real crisis to me, and I truly believe that we cannot solve it by doing nothing. I have gone through the opposition submissions and I truly don't could uh dismiss the concerns around livability, infrastructure, or change from our neighbors. I would just urge us to ask, who are we protecting when we say no to developments like this? Are we protecting people, young people, or are we protecting privilege? Because we can't keep telling young people, newcomers, and working families in the city that there's no place for them in Kits or Fairview. This really isn't about ideology, it's about urgency and equity. And it's also about saying that Vancouver doesn't just belong to those who arrived first, but also to those who are trying to build a life here now. This development, like many others, represents a rare opportunity for us to say yes to new rental housing, yes to below-market homes, and yes to children who need care and families and space. And if not here, in one of the most well-served, desirable parts of the city, where? Personally, this project reflects the kind of city that I want to live in. Inclusive, ambitious, and willing to rise to the moment. I would respectfully ask council to support this application and to continue leading with the courage that this housing crisis demands. Thank you very much, I'm incredibly grateful for your time.
Great, thank you uh very much. Uh, the next speaker is number six, uh Kirsty Lang. Kirsty, are you on the line?
I am, can you hear me?
You can hear you great, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My legal name is Kirsty Lang and I'm opposed to the rezoning of twenty-one eighty West Sixth to CD One to accommodate a twenty-four-story building. My reasons are several, starting with number one, the cited pace of change and numbers of necessary homes. I understand from statements, articles, and presentations I have read and attended by twenty-two of Vancouver's planning and development experts and historians, who I trust that the number of homes needed over the next thirty years is artificially inflated and that the pace of change will result in far too many tenants being displaced unnecessarily and quickly from perfectly sound and affordable apartments. More on this in a moment. Number two, building these numbers of necessary homes, i.e. supply doesn't solve a housing crisis. If it did, Vancouver's problems would have already been solved because we've built record numbers of supply. But most of us, as I suspect most of council and staff members, can't choose whatever home happens to be available. It depends on many factors like, number three, the rental and or purchase price. The price, whether it's market value or below-market value, is determined in large part by inflated land values. Solve the problem of inflated land value rather than contributing to it, and then you have rental homes that are affordable. More on this, yeah. Number four, necessary infrastructure and a strong public realm. Infrastructure isn't just transit and the new Skytrain system, although that helps. Infrastructure isn't just the sidewalk to watch Skytrain stations or the bike lanes, all of which contribute to getting us to our destination, and they help too. No, infrastructure supports the destinations themselves, points along the Broadway Plan where we need to live and thrive. Those of us who live within the Broadway Plan can be your greatest ambassadors. Can't emphasize this enough. Those of us who live within the Broadway Plan can be your greatest ambassadors. But we need some consideration in order to be one of your greatest assets. As Jennifer Keesmat writ- writes in the nation's paper, the Globe and Mail, signing cities where most people do not need a car only work, quote, if people actually want to live in these places. If public spaces are poorly maintained, if streets are unpleasant to walk in, and if density is not matched with investments in quality of life, then people will seek out more attractive seeming alternatives, such as car-dependent suburbs. A failure to commit to a strong public realm undermines the very policies that are meant to create a more sustainable future. End of quote. In the last year and since the sign for this rezoning proposal for twenty-one eighty West Sixth was installed, streetlights went dark on each street for blocks north and south of Sixth Avenue, plunging us into darkness. This is a no-go. Poorly maintained, unpleasant to walk in, and forget quality of life, this is patently unsafe. Which leads me to number five, safety for women. Broadway Plan is not designed for women. Turning up lots in five hundred city blocks to build twenty-plus-story towers, this affects care, connection, and the right to feel safe in public space. Quote. A woman in public has to calculate how long will-
Sorry, I'm Kirsty, I'm sorry, uh you're out of time. But thank you very much uh for uh coming out today. Um, speaker number seven is Rohan Sarai. Rohan, are you on the line?
Yep, hello?
Please go ahead.
Can you guys hear me? Awesome. Good evening, Mayor and Council, my name is Rohan Sarai. I'm a proud resident of Vancouver and I'm here speaking as a twenty-one-year-old in strong support of the rezoning application for twenty-one eighty West Sixth. Having grown up here my entire life, I've always hoped to build both my professional and personal future in the city, especially in a neighborhood like Kitzalano. Become increasingly difficult to hold on to. The rising cost of living and the lack of affordable rental housing have made it incredibly challenging for young people like myself to stay rooted in the communities we love. Too often, we're faced with the difficult decision of leaving beautiful neighborhoods like Kitzalano in search for more attainable options elsewhere. This pro- proposal represents the kind of future I still believe is possible and is very much needed in our city. With a hundred and sixty-six secure rental homes, including twenty percent of the residential floor area dedicated to below-market units, this is the kind of inclusive housing that gives young people like myself a real chance to remain in the place we call home. Uh, what stands out most to me about this application is how thoughtfully it's been designed. It includes a childcare facility, ground-for commercial space to support small businesses, and most importantly is just two blocks away from the future Broadway subway, our Buda Station, one block from the frequent bus service on our Buda Street, and three blocks from the Cypress Street bike route. As a young resident, I rely on public transit and active transportation options to get to work and really anywhere. The local location of this development convenia- uh conveniently offers everything a young renter needs to build a long future in Vancouver. Ultimately, I want to live in Van- in a Vancouver that is dynamic, connected, and livable. A city where everything I need is within reach. Project li- projects like this bring us one step closer to that vision. I urge council to approve this application and ensure that the young residents of Vancouver like myself can continue to live, grow, and thrive in this incredible city. Uh, I want to thank you, council, for allowing me the opportunity to speak and share my thoughts. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Now, this is the third and final call for speakers. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll free at uh one eight three 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 five three eighty six ten, followed by participant code one oh six one four four five pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be posted on X and made available on the live stream. If there are any additional speakers in the council chamber, please come forward to the podium. Um, do we have uh anyone online or in the chamber? Okay, so we're gonna take a five-minute recess and wait for any additional speakers. All right. Yep. Okay, so it looks like we do have additional speakers. Sarah, please go ahead.
Hey, sorry, yeah, thank you. My name is Sarah MacLeod. I live in Vancouver. The time has started. Here we go. Um, I won't stick with the tree thing, although I wish I could circle back to it, we'll see. I honestly wonder if it helps if I tell you what my age is, if that would just make you listen more. But let's just say, instead of telling you my age, that I would like to have kids, you know? And that was not possible in an unsustainable career and city, and so I moved to Vancouver and upgraded. Maybe one day if I can move my work outside of where I live, then I can be a caretaker, or at least be able to do that. There are grants that can help me move, if that is where I'm at, but we'll see, you know. I want to try to take care of myself first, like I'm obviously responsible, but it is something that I want to have, so if that helps with my age, maybe, I don't know. Yeah, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, and other things with the Broadway Plan, there have been questions asked about like, what is a family-sized? Because like I said, if you work from home or have to work from home, or then the two-bedroom isn't possible, so that's a consideration. Um, I live in an 800-foot two-bedroom, and I noticed the amenity, indoor amenity room on the roof for the building that can hold 398 people in 166 units. That's based on the average per unit, which is around 2.4. It might have changed recently, but I remember it being like that, and I was like, oh, that makes sense, because like, two plus, oh, you're expecting, you know, if you guys are building places for family, you want there to be a continuation to that, too, right? Like, two plus, what's to come next? Um, anyways, yeah, so, two-bedroom, can't even have a child in the two-bedroom at 800 square feet, but yeah, we're going to have an amenity of 1,600 square feet for 398 people and their children. And I know there's the mixed use, childcare in there. Um, uh, I, when I went through childcare, I went to Mud Puddle, it was just in some lady, not lady, Lily and Lori's backyard. It was just Lily, my sister had Lily and Lori later, and it was outside, and it was under the trees, and it was under the, and it was smelling the flowers and exploring and being in nature, and I want to try to help people have that same experience that I did. I think it's a great way to grow up. Just trying everything to not go back on the tree thing, because I said I wouldn't from the beginning. No, also, like, the ones removed, so we'll go to the trees, that are being proposed removed that are poor condition, has, can we get a reason why they're poor-conditioned for the arbiters and people who look at that stuff? Because maybe it's because already the setback of the three-floor wasn't enough back then, and that sucks. But we can learn the lesson and maybe fix those things, because they never had a chance, maybe. Also, like, when seven proposed on-site are for removal, just, that's seven by-law-sized trees, so there's dozens of other pollinator plants, fragrance plants. I know not all of them are native, but like, it's the ecosystem that the species have evolved to in Vancouver, like, it is their home, and there's laws against it. Not private, I know, on the Crown lands, but then there's also covenants, actually, that would also say that, so. You know, sometimes bylaws let people do a little bit more than what, you know, the provincial or federal would let people do. That's why we keep making them, let people buy their laws.
Thanks, Sarah. Clerk, do we have any other speakers, either in the chamber or online?
Not seeing any, and none for the telephone line.
Okay. Okay, so seeing no further speakers, the speakers list is now closed. Seeing that there are few or no public comments received after 4:00 PM today, I'm now going to close the receipt of public comments. Does the applicant team have any closing comments?
Again, thank you all for your time, and thank you.
Thank you. Do our team members have any closing comments?
Staff do not have any closing comments.
Thanks, Daniel. Does council have any final questions for our team members? Counselor Montague?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Just one quick question to our staff. The TOA legislation, can you remind me how the distances are measured? Is it closest property line to closest property line, or?
Templar Director of Rezoning, so the TOA legislation is measured from GIS coordinates at the center provided by the province, so we have a pinpoint location of where we measure from, and you go out in 200, 400, 800-meter increments, and as long as the property has one square inch of area within that line, it's counted within that TOA ring.
Okay, so as long as the...
As long as the property line touches that arc, it's within that arc.
Okay, and this does, was within the 200 meters, is that correct? I know it's very close.
Tier two, so it would be the 400-meter run.
Okay, so it must be like 203 meters or something. I was just doing a measurement on Google Maps, and it's very close to 200 meters.
And the Google Maps might not be the most accurate way. We've got the TOA bylaws that actually pinpoint the location from the province, so the best to use the GIS coordinates from the province.
Okay, so regardless, the TOA requires, or provides, a minimum 12-story...
Or FSR.
For FSR, but very, here, very close to the minimum of 20 stories anyway, and we're, there's a request for 24, is that right?
Correct. Most of the Broadway Plan area actually exceeds the minimum heights and densities of the TOA policy from the province.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Any other questions from council? Seeing no one in the queue, Clerk, did we receive any additional public comments since the close of the public comments?
No.
Okay. So, council, we're now going to make a decision on this application. Do we have a mover? Great, thank you, Counselor Kirby Young, seconded by Counselor Domonato, thank you. Council is there in discussion? Seeing no one in the queue, why don't we put this to a vote? If we can, please go to the voting panel.
Oh, Mayor, against Counselor Joe here, I need assistance in favor, please. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And that passes unanimously. Thank you, team. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So, the next item we have on the docket is item number three, CD-1 rezoning, 1364 West 10th Avenue. Now, before we begin, does any council member wish to declare a conflict of interest on this item? Okay, the clerk will now read the application and summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by CCI Trading Group Incorporated to rezone 1364 West 11th Avenue from RM-3 Residential District to CD-1 Comprehensive Development District, to permit the development of a 20-story residential building containing 178 rental units, of which 20% of the residential floor area will be secured as below-market rental units. A floor space ratio of 6.5 and a height of 59.3 meters, or 195 feet, with additional height for rooftop and many space are proposed. The General Manager of Planning, Urban Design, and Sustainability recommends approval, subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation. The following correspondence has been received since referral to the public hearing. Three pieces of correspondence in support, and 10 pieces of correspondence in opposition. This represents all correspondence received up to 4:00 PM today.
Thank you very much. Now, this is the first call for speakers. Any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free at 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be posted on X made available on the live stream. There will be an opportunity for new speakers and mid-speakers to be added to the end of the registered speakers list, and we do have our team members from Planning, Urban Design, and Sustainability here to present the application.
Doesn't seem like it's coming up there. Try again. No, it's not working. Maybe now? That's unusual. Perfect, thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Lauren Whitney, planner for this rezoning application being considered under the Broadway Plan. There we go. The site outlined in red is mid-block on West 11th Avenue between Hemlock and Birch Streets. The surrounding context is residential, with commercial buildings along Granville Street to the west. The existing site is occupied by a 38-unit, four-story rental residential building with 30 tenancies, some of whom are eligible for tenant protection under the Tenant Relocation and Protection Policy. The site is well-served by transit, with South Granville Subway Station, bus service, and bikeways nearby. Several parks, schools, childcare facilities, and community spaces are also located in the area. The proposal is in the Fairview South Area B of the Broadway Plan, which anticipates market rental buildings up to 20 stories, with 20% of the residential floor area secured at low-market rates. A maximum density of 6.5 FSR and a minimum frontage of 150 feet for tower sites. The December 2023 application proposes a building height of 20 stories, density of 6.5 FSR, and 178 rental units, with 20% provided at low-market rates. Loading and four levels of underground parking are accessible from the lane. This application is consistent with the plan for a 20-story tower-on-podium building form. Outdoor amenity space is provided on the rooftop and in the rear yard. Improvements to the public realm are proposed with provision of ground-oriented units along West 11th Avenue. Rental housing in Vancouver is provided along a continuum. This table compares the monthly cost of below-market rental and market rental on the west side of the city, and the average household incomes that they serve. 61 submissions were received during the public consultation period. Support was expressed for the addition of density and proximity to rapid transit, the below-market rental units, and the alignment of the proposal with city objectives. Concerns were related to the affordability of the new rental units, the displacement of existing tenants, impacts to neighborhood character, perceived misalignment with tower-per-block policy, and increased traffic congestion and parking demand. In response to public comments, the proposed height, scale, uses, and proportion of below-market units are consistent with the plan. The proposal aligns with policy to deliver market and below-market rental units to the area, and the applicant is subject to the city's tenant protections to support existing tenants. At the time of the public Q&amp;A, the Broadway Plan included policy that only allowed two towers on this block. Council has since approved amendments to the Broadway Plan to remove the tower limit policy in this location, and as a result, additional towers may now be permitted on the block. Traffic upgrades will be provided with intersection improvements at Hemlock Street and West 11th Avenue through the installation of a new pedestrian and cyclist signal. At the development permit stage, the applicant will be required to submit a transportation demand management plan to explore strategies to further reduce impacts to traffic and parking demand. The public benefit of this application are the secured market and below-market rental units. In addition, this proposal will contribute over $2 million of development cost levies and a public art contribution. A citywide DCL waiver has been requested by the applicant. In summary, staff have concluded that the proposal is consistent with the Broadway Plan and support the application, subject to conditions in Appendix B of the report. Staff and the applicant team are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Would the applicant team like to present the application?
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. My name is Wing Leung, I'm the architect, making the application that is before you this evening. We've read the staff report, and we're comfortable with the conditions of the approval within the report, and we're confident that we can meet them. I'll be happy to answer any questions that council may have of us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Wing. Are there any questions from council to our team members or the applicant team, noting that this is the only opportunity for council to ask questions of the applicant? Seeing no one in the queue?
Thank you.
Great, thank you. This is the second call for speakers. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free at 1-833-353-8610, followed by the participant code 1061445 pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be posted on X made available on the live stream. So we're now going to hear from the public. Any registered speakers in the council chamber, please come forward to the podium when your name is called. Speakers will have five minutes to make their comments, and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. And so, the first speaker we have on our list is Louis Villegas.
Good, Mayor and Council. My name is Louis Villegas. I'm a Vancouver resident and urban design specialist with 44 years' experience. Next slide, please. I oppose this tower and the Broadway corridor plan, because every tower that is approved by government feeds the housing affordability crisis, destroying families, neighborhoods, and the middle class. Next slide, please. Our human vision perceives both objects and spaces. Objects are best seen at a distance of three times the height, as a 40-story building is best seen at 1,200 feet away, or from the neighborhood next door. Next line. When I created the concept plan for the Olympic Village, higher-ups in the real estate department here at City Hall made a point of telling me that the city would make more money by building towers. The second experience available to human vision are spaces like this one. In order to see a space, the space must be three times bigger than the buildout surrounding it. Also, there must be continuity of background and continuity of the ground plane. This is a timeless tradition in urbanism for delivering the sense of place. Next slide, please. This is not how to create the sense of place. The clerks were good enough to censor this slide the last time I tried to show this tower garden being built at City Hall. Next, please. And this is not how to build a good city. The Steve Bohus model predicts the cumulative effects of crowding. The tower zones lack the sense of place, because they're crammed full of objects, not spaces. Good cities are conceived as a linked sequence of spaces. Next slide, please. This is what passes for professional practice today. This is what passes for professional practice today. Next line. Images from the Frankenstein plan clearly show the problem. The towers are circled like wagons around the vernacular human-scale cottages. The view from the cottages or from the cottage windows is going to be a wall of towers. Next. By giving away land lift, government is destroying the neighborhoods to feed the greed of their political supporters. This is how land lift works. In commercial zones, land lift yields seven times more space per parcel. But seven times is not enough.
Sorry, um, Louis, can you give me a sec?
Yeah, uh, point of order, Chair. I've heard a lot of this, and I have referenced my procedure by law, specifically the section about speakers and conduct in the public gallery. And with respects to um, the staff requesting to speak, and speakers should not, uh, impugn motives or order. And I think suggesting that council is feeding the greed of the development has gone beyond the pale, and I am tired of listening to this rhetoric from the same individual. So can you please rule on this point of order, please?
I, I rule in favor, and so if we can please refrain, uh, from those types of comments, uh, that would be great. Thank you.
Do my best. Where are we for time?
Uh, two and a half minutes. I'll put some time back on your clock there.
You're gonna give me two and a half? Okay. So the seven times, uh, land lift is not enough. The developers want more. And so they can realize even higher profits by building towers in the neighborhood. That's not an impugning moment motive. That is actually what is happening. So thirty times land lift is achievable by building towers next to cottages per the Frankenstein plan. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Great. What industry insiders call land lift is one of the major causes of the housing crisis. Next slide. When housing prices double, bottom right, housing budgets are cut in half, bottom left. With less money circulating locally, businesses close and jobs go begging because small business is the backbone of the employment in Canada. You want proof? Look at the empty storefronts and the papered-over windows. Next slide. Unchecked by government, greed is relentless. What once was a studio is now a one-bedroom. A one-bedroom is a two-bedroom, two fits three, and so on. People are being crammed into tiny, puny apartments so developers can maximize profits. Next slide, please. We also see cumulative ill effects of crowding playing out at the neighborhood scale. Next slide. Edward T. Hall reminds us that the, like the link between cancer and food additives, the cumulative ill effects of crowding are usually not experienced until the damage has been done. Next slide. Government giving away concessions to the development industry at every turn raises serious questions about the state of our society. Government failing to adequately plan for the needs of people creates serious questions about the health of our society. At the by-elections, I witnessed the disenfranchisement of a voter who walked away in a rage because government did not plan adequately for the large turnout. Next slide, please. Raising serious questions about the, next slide, please. Next slide. Serious questions about the capacity of this chamber to plan at all. We are at an inflection point. We can either have extreme wealth and inequality with the toxic divisions and corruption required to make it thrive, including a government-made crisis in housing affordability, or we can have a fair economy.
And Louis, I'm, I'm sorry you're out of time. I, I did.
No problem. Thank you for the chance to speak.
Thank you very much, Louis. Um, the next speaker we have is Stephen Boas.
Okay, uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. Uh, I'm a Vancouver resident. I'm a renter, and I work in South Granville. I cycle nearby on West Ten, sometimes on West Eleven, uh, so I, I know the area quite well. Here, uh, this is yet another mature rental building, and this, if you is, uh, if this unit is passed for rezoning, that will bring the total up to four hundred and ninety-eight rental units, uh, redeveloped since November of twenty twenty-four in the Broadway Plan area, which, if these are fully occupied, that's over a thousand residents. Next slide. So you actually saw this, uh, slide previously. It's also in the referral report. Couple of things I wanted to bring your attention to, and it's not just that the, the sun is shining from the north, which does happen in Australia, but doesn't happen here. This is a, a tower forest, and it's the antithesis of, of human-scale urbanism. I think the previous speaker, uh, mentioned that. There are two existing towers on this block, and it's the Longbird Street, and you can see a little photo of the laneway there. The, uh, council approved a third tower on this block at thirteen sixty-five West Twelfth Avenue. And, uh, a fourth tower would not have been allowed under the original Broadway Plan. And, uh, this application came in in December of twenty twenty-three with the knowledge that the current Broadway Plan would not allow an additional tower. However, uh, council, uh, with the report and direction from staff, amended the Broadway Plan to allow a fourth tower here. But what you are seeing here is a, uh, a tower forest. They're plain and simple. Next slide. So I, I made a massing model to illustrate the size, relative size of this rezoning across from the street, uh, or the laneway, and there's actually a laneway here from the tower that was approved, and then, uh, there's another tower in the upper, uh, left corner that has been referred. So there is a lot of, uh, high density and a lot of shadow that would, uh, become, uh, would, uh, be prominent in this area if this were passing. This is just the spring equinox that I'm illustrating at, uh, ten A M. Next slide. Here's a, a build-out, uh, scenario with the, uh, site right smack in the center there with the other, uh, sites nearby. Some of them are, uh, in progress, and some of them are developable sites, and a lot of, uh, rental units. And for the Broadway Plan, there is so much capacity along Broadway and major arterial streets. There are brownfield sites, but it seems like the favorite place to go and the go-to place are the existing rental buildings because they're the easiest to attain and to evict, and the policies don't protect renters. Next slide. And, uh, this would allow, uh, more rental displacement, uh, renters. Uh, where are they gonna go? Maybe a couple of buildings in the queue, they'll find places to go, but once you get to a thousand residents, where are they gonna go? Where are they gonna return? And how are they gonna live there? So I think the whole idea of having, uh, this, uh, renter protection policy is the wrong way to go about it. You should be protecting these rental buildings or minimum. Next slide. You should be considering a pace-of-change approach, which worked in Granville Woodland for almost a decade before. That was revoked as well last year uh, by staff recommendations and, and this council, because that does limit the, uh, rate that precious rental buildings are lost. And, and of course, the other question is, is this applicant, uh, C C I Trading Group? I don't know what their portfolio is. Have they built anything? Or is this property purely a speculative flip that will be passed on to someone after rezoning? Are you just printing money to fuel land lift without actually having a benefit, without actually having a project in the ground? Next slide. And I don't know that that's, you know, an open question, but, you know, the previous applicant and the next one, I think they're, they've got deep pockets. I don't know about this one. Uh, there was a lot of opposition to the, uh, pace-of-change policy, and it, uh, didn't pass in any form. Next slide. And yes, we, uh, we have another, uh, rental building on the block, and a vote in favor of this is a vote in favor of demovicting everyone from this, uh, building, displacing people, causing a lot of human harm and suffering. So I would urge, uh, council to reconsider the Broadway Plan policy as it pertains to mature rental buildings and not pass this rezoning. Thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, uh, this is the third and final call for speakers. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free at one eight three 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 five three eighty-six ten, followed by participant code one oh six one four four five pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be posted on X made available on the live stream. If there are any additional speakers in the council chamber, please come forward to the podium. Um, clerk, do we have, uh, any speakers in the chamber or online?
Just checking, and I do not see anyone in the chamber. And none on the line.
Okay, so we'll take another five-minute recess. Thank you.
Um, sorry. Sorry. Um, my name's Sarah McLeod. Uh, I live in Vancouver. So I'll guess choose to focus on the public realm part. Like the block of West Eleventh, you get to have, you know, um, a nice sidewalk. When I read the public realm shirt, it was all about safety and bicycle lanes and, um, good sidewalks. But there was also a lot about green and nature and experiencing nature in, uh, our public lives. So do what you can, I guess, of the public realm with that sidewalk. Hoping that there's trees there, hoping the city plants more. There's six city ones currently there, two existing on-site. I don't know if they said they want to take them down or not. I'm not sure. And four neighboring trees for retention. And what's interesting about these neighboring trees for retention is it identifies them. So they're not even on the site. They're someone else's on a different site. And it says these trees are protected during construction. But the city. But the city staff is not looking at data that shows that when they die in 10 years because of the designs, well, it's okay, because we only had to retain them during construction. And those are other people's trees, they're not even on the site. They're like infringing on someone else's property. Properties, assets, like the trees are your biggest asset, public app, like for the public realm, like invest in trees. So that's kind of like, makes me feel icky, because it's encroaching. So those ones aren't even like getting to, are talked about, I mean, they are talked about in the thing. So I guess kudos to acknowledging their existence, but they're deemed good to kill in the future. Like to know for what reasons. Six trees, city trees, print more, the two on site, I don't know, I haven't looked at the map. And then I guess with my time, because I have no other prepared things, I just agree with everything that Steve and Louis said, like, we're dying out here. Seems like there's tons of room for more people to be working and on important projects like this and making sure things don't get missed that affect all of our healths. Oh yeah, health.
Great, thank you, Sarah. Clerk, do we have any one else online or in the chamber?
There's still a minute and a half. It's a shout out, it's a thank you. Whoever wrote the bylaw, whoever did write the tree bylaw, this was so smart, this was the genius thing. Sorry, I meant to bring it up on the last one. So with this mathematical calculation, 330 trees, why does it grow, why does it jump so much? Well, in the previous one, this one's 18,000 square meters, the previous one was 12,900 square meters, and it was four units. And when you actually divided that space, the four units, it was under 3250, which is where the bylaw all of a sudden says, you know what, this is no longer just like, kind of like a private thing, we should jump the amount of trees, because it's what's necessary when providing a group for everyone. So the genius who wrote that bylaw is like thinking about public realm there, because it's no longer just like 30 trees on your property, because it's your property. It's like now it's a big enough space that it is, it is, it is nature. It is like, you know, we finally stopped cutting it up, but it's still cut up, but it's bigger. And it requires more life on it. And so the genius who wrote that part of the bylaw, shout out. There's other parts that are weak, but that's a, that's why you need more when it gets bigger, because it affects more people, the thousands of people that live there. Cool, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you for that extra minute and a bit.
Thanks, Sarah. Okay, do we have any additional speakers online or in the chamber?
I do not see any in the chamber, just checking. We may have one speaker, if you could just give me a moment, please. Sorry, team, do we have an additional speaker?
Hello?
Yes, please go ahead. What was your name?
My name's Caitlin. I live in Vancouver, in the building that we're talking about here.
Sorry, Caitlin, can I please get your last name?
Lee.
Thank you. Please go ahead.
Yeah, so I struggled like to know if I should call in or not, but yeah, I live in this building and I love this building. It's a great, great building. We have a great sense of community here. And the area is great the way it is, although of course I understand that we need more housing, like obviously, everyone knows that. But I do fear that the way that we're going about this is, is not going to be very nice for, for anyone or for most people. We have a real opportunity to change the way that Vancouver is and the way that it could be. And I just fear that building all these towers really is going to disrupt kind of the community sense that we do have now. Obviously, what the previous commenter was talking about, the trees, yeah, like, I get that we need more housing and we need more space for everyone to live, but there's a way that we can do it in that we can have more, yeah, spaces, spaces for people to go on the ground in, like, touch grass, you know, and not be shadowed by giant towers. And I think the fact that, I mean, I just learned this tonight by watching, that there's going to be like four towers on this block. And I know that, you know, I walk around the neighborhood and there's, you know, five or six just in the two blocks that have applied for these permits. And I really just want to express my concern for that. And maybe we can think about diversifying the height of these buildings. But yeah, I just wanted to, to express how much I love this building and will miss it if, if this goes through.
Thank you very much. Clerk, we have another speaker?
Just checking, Mayor. None in the chamber and none on the line.
Okay. Seeing no further speakers, the speakers list is now closed. Seeing that there are few or no public comments received after 4:00 PM, I'm now going to close the receipt of public comments. Now, does the applicant team have any closing comments? Nope. Okay, thank you. Do our team members from the city of Vancouver have any closing comments?
No, thanks.
Thank you very much. Does council have any final questions for our team members? Seeing no one in the queue, did we receive any additional public comments since the close of public comments?
No.
Okay. Council will now make its decision on this application. Do we have a mover for the recommendation? Thank you very much, seconded by councillor Claussen. Council, is there any discussion? Seeing no one in the queue, I'm now going to call a vote. Can we please go to the voting panel?
Mayor, against councillor Joe, I need a vote assisting in favor, please. Thanks.
Great, and that passes unanimously. Thank you, team, for all the hard work. Congratulations. Okay, the final item on the docket for tonight is number four, CD-1 rezoning, 1770 West 12th Avenue. Now, before we begin this item, does anyone on council wish to declare a conflict of interest? Nope. Okay, the clerk's now going to read the application and the summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by dialogue to rezone 1770 West 12th Avenue from RM-3 Residential District to CD-1 Comprehensive Development District to permit the development of a 24-story mixed-use building containing 264 rental units, with 20% of the residential floor area for below-market rental units and a commercial space on the ground floor. A floor space ratio of 6.8 and a height of 76.6 meters, or 251 feet, with additional height for rooftop amenity space are proposed. The general manager of planning, urban design, and sustainability recommends approval, subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation. The following correspondence has been received since referral to the public hearing. 21 pieces of correspondence in support, 25 pieces of correspondence in opposition, and two pieces of correspondence dealing with other aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to 4:00 PM today.
Great, thank you very much. Now, this is the first call for speakers, any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council. Please call toll-free at 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445Pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be posted on X made available on the live stream. There will be an opportunity for new speakers and missed speakers to be added to the end of the registered speakers list. Now, we do have our team members from planning, urban design, and sustainability here to present the application.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Zoe Acton, and I am the rezoning planner for this application being considered under the Broadway Plan. Staff would like to note that there is a yellow memo attached to this report. In July of 2023, council approved amendments to the green building policy and Vancouver Building Bylaw, which resulted in simplified rainwater management requirements for rezoning and development pertinent applications. The yellow memo amends the rainwater conditions in Appendix B of the report in order to reflect these approved changes. Staff would also like to note that the presentation includes the updated rendering for the project, which showcases the full 24-story expression of the proposed development. The site, shown in red, is located on the southeast corner of West 12th Avenue and Burrard Street. The site is zoned RM3, and the surrounding area is zoned RM3 and RT8. The property is currently developed with a three-story residential building. All five existing residential tenancies are eligible for tenant protection under the tenant relocation and protection policy. Eligible tenants are protected under the enhanced tenant relocation and protection policy. The neighborhood is undergoing significant change with a future subway station five blocks away, which is scheduled to open in 2027. The area is well-served by public transit, bike routes, parks, and childcare centers and community facilities. The site is located in the Fairview South Area B subarea. The plan permits a 20-story market rental building with 20% of the residential floor area secured as below-market units. The maximum density is 6.5 FSR with an increase of up to 0.3 FSR for ground-level local serving retail. The plan also allows for additional height for rooftop amenities. Plan amendments approved by council in December of 2024 allow to consider an increased building height in circumstances where it helps in achieving better urban design outcomes. This application was submitted in May of 2024, and the applicant is proposing a 24-story mixed-use tower with a six-story podium, ground-floor local serving retail, and additional height for rooftop amenities. The project includes 264 rental units, of which 20% are below-market units. A density of 6.8 FSR and a height of 76 meters are proposed. The average starting rents are shown on this table, as well as the average annual household incomes that they serve. Starting rents for the below-market units are to be discounted 20% below-citywide average market rents. A virtual Q&amp;A period was held from June 26th to July 9th of 2024, and 92 pieces of correspondence were received. Support was expressed for the addition of much-needed rental housing, appropriate height and density of the area, and the co-location being close to future transit. Concerns were related to height, density, and massing, traffic and parking, tree removal, and neighborhood character. In response to public feedback regarding height, density, and massing, the proposed height, scale, uses, and density are consistent with the intent of the plan. As for traffic and parking, the application meets the expectations of the parking bylaw and will need to provide a transportation demand management plan at the time of development permit. Staff anticipate an overall reduction in vehicle trips with the completion of the Broadway subway. Regarding tree removal, the plan recognizes the need to increase tree canopy cover in the city, and this is reflected in the applicant's future landscape plan. In terms of neighborhood fit, this application meets the form of development anticipated by the Broadway Plan, which seeks to incentivize new housing options in close proximity to rapid transit, shopping, services, and amenities. The public benefits accruing from this application are the rental and below-market rental units. The DCL and public art contribution are estimated to be approximately $3.5 million. The applicant has also requested a 100% waiver of the citywide DCLs for the residential floor area. The site was not subject to CAC review as the below-market rental units offset any land lift. Therefore, no CAC is required. In conclusion, this proposal aligns with the Broadway Plan and advances the city's rental housing targets by delivering 264 rental units with 20% of the residential floor area secured for below-market rental units. Staff recommend approval of this application, subject to the conditions outlined in Appendix B of the report. Staff and the applicant team are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Would the applicant team like to present the application?
Good evening. Sorry, I'm sick but present, John Wilbeck. Excited to be here. Thank you for the opportunity. Managing Director with Grey Star Canada, the developer behind the proposed project. As a resident of Vancouver, excited, this is our first proposed project. We have a second file that we'll be presenting hopefully in a couple of weeks by Science World. Grey Star's over 30-year history, we're now in 249 markets globally. This will be our first proposed rental project. We're taking 41 Strata units and replacing it with 264 secured rental housing, so we're excited about that. We also have under construction today nearly 600 units in Sanich, BC, over 100,000 square feet of retail, so really focused likewise on this advancing this project. If successful with approval, we would be on track to submit a development permit before the summer starts. So again, excited to advance this. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Great, thank you very much. Go here. Are there any questions from council to our team members or the applicant team, noting that this is the only opportunity for council to ask questions of the applicant? I do not see anyone in the queue. This is the second call for speakers. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free at 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445Pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be posted on X made available on the live stream. We're now going to hear from the public. Any registered speakers in the council chamber, please come forward to the podium when your name is called. Speakers will have up to five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. So the first speaker we have is speaker number one, Sue Griffin. Welcome, Sue.
Good evening. My name is Sue Griffin. I'm an owner and resident of 1777 West 13th Avenue, a 52-year-old building located immediately to the south of the proposed 24-story tower at 1770 West 12th Avenue. I'm very much opposed to the size and scale of this proposed development, while I am in favor of increasing density and housing options in the city. The size and the scale of the proposed tower ensures a loss of character and livability of the neighborhood, as well as negatively impacting the health of the neighborhood and its residents. The neighborhood between Burrard and Granville, bounded by West 12th and 16th, is comprised of tranquil, tree-lined streets, has a mix of new and old condominiums, rentals, high-rises, and townhouses ranging in height from two to 15 stories. There are two very large parks at West 14th and Pine boasting brand-new off-leash dog park and children's play area directly across from a senior's residence. The heart and the beat of the neighborhood is palpable. The design of the tower is 10 stories higher than any other building in the neighborhood, does not align with the character, nor is it harmonious with the existing architectural style of the neighborhood. There is no vision. The design is ubiquitous to every other 21-story proposed development to the city, and quite frankly, does nothing to enhance the livability, the visual landscape, the unique characteristics, and aesthetics of South Granville. I refer to the city of Vancouver's healthy city strategy and to the Broadway Plan policy for the balancing of density and sunlight. The healthy city strategy has a stated goal to continually improve the conditions that allow everyone to enjoy the highest level of health and wellbeing possible. The Broadway Plan acknowledges the need obviously for increased density to accommodate population growth, but also recognizes the importance of sunlight access for residents. The proposed tower will effectively block all sunlight along the north side of 1777 West 13th, resulting in a loss of natural light, impacting the overall livability of the owners and residents, as well as their neighbors to the south. 41% of the owners and residents of 1777 West 13th are seniors. Reducing natural light into their homes will have a negative impact on these folks, especially those who struggle with social isolation and loneliness, which we know is becoming a global epidemic. The city has influence over many social determinants of health, particularly those relating to the physical form of the city. Towers that block Towers that block natural light simply do not support the health nor wellbeing of residents. The proposal does not support the city's goal of allowing everyone to enjoy the highest level of health and wellbeing possible. I refer to the strategic priorities of the city, objective number seven, stating that we put Vancouver's physical and mental health front and centre and strive to alleviate barriers to residents' wellbeing and sense of belonging. I would suggest that towers of 21-plus stories do not create a sense of belonging, but rather reduce social interaction, resulting in a greater sense of loneliness and socialisation. Towers of this size are in fact a barrier to residents' wellbeing and sense of belonging. I refer to the City of Vancouver's website, Re Vancouver's Urban Forest, stating that each tree plays an increasingly important role as we experience the effects of climate change, as well as improving our health and wellbeing. There are 16 mature trees that are over four stories, 40 feet, that line the alley behind the proposed tower. These trees are being removed, resulting in increased traffic noise, the destruction of natural habitat, or creating a barren and sterile view from the north side of the alley. I would ask that the council ask for a significant reduction of building height, or build two 14-story towers that match the scale and character of South Granville, or reduce the width of the tower and the height of the podium to reduce the negative impact on neighbours' lack of natural light. Keep the 16 mature trees and move the footprint closer to West 12th Avenue. Align the designs of the property with those of the Healthy Living Strategy and ensure projects leverage existing city assets like the parks and the playgrounds versus creating their own. I trust that the voices you hear tonight and the messages they share are heard by every one of you, and that you will seriously consider them in making your decision and simply not rubber stamp the project. Thank you very much for your time.
Great, thank you very much, Sue. The next speaker we have is speaker number two, Kathleen Collin.
Honorable Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I am Kathleen Collin. I have owned and resided in our condo at 1777 West 13th for 31 years. Our building is across the alley from the proposed new rental building at 1770 West 12th. I am the Strata President, and although I'm speaking for myself, I have spoken with most of the 58 other owners in my building, and their concerns are reflected in my comments tonight, and I am opposed to this building. I welcome the addition of new residents and families to the neighbourhood, but I have concerns about some of the aspects of the rental building, specifically the children's play area, the dog off-leash area and the height and size of this structure. A play area of 700 square feet is proposed for the ground floor facing the alley. The dog off-leash area will also be in the alley and will be 265 square feet. I suggest that dogs barking and howling in the alley are not conducive to the quiet enjoyment of our homes or to working from home, as many people do. The alley itself will be much busier with car and truck traffic, as the proposed rental building has 171 parking stalls. The alley is currently very well-used by contractors, gardeners, recycling and garbage trucks, delivery trucks and the condo owners in the three buildings that access their underground parking from the alley. At Pine and West 14th is the Granville Park, a 380-metre, 4-minute, 14-second walk from the front door of the proposed rental building. Granville Park has a children's playground with slides, swings, a sandpit and a few other features. The park itself is greater than 40,000 square feet, with stone walls to protect the children on the south and west ends and a partial fence along the north alley. There are shade trees and two benches. Across Pine Street to the east is a new, large, off-leash dog area with a separated area for small and shy dogs. Adjoining this off-leash dog area is another park of 27,300 square feet, also with shade trees and two benches. The first proposal for this building was a four-story podium with a 20-story tower, which I strongly opposed. This new proposal somehow increases the podium height by 50% to six stories and the tower to 24 stories. Even more emphatically, I say no. This size does not by any stretch of the imagination fit into this beautiful residential neighbourhood. It's a monstrosity, it is destructive and I vehemently oppose it. My recommendations for your consideration are: eliminate the proposed playground and dog area from the resident, the rental building design. They are very small and I suspect they will be unused or underused, and an alley is not safe for children. It is very important for the new residents in the rental building to become part of the fabric of our community. By encouraging them to leave their silo and go to the nearby parks and off-leash dog area, they will meet other families, other dog owners and other residents. Permit only a maximum three-story podium with a maximum 14-story tower height, the podium to be included in the 14 stories. And the developer should not be permitted to waive the DCLs and instead should provide more playground equipment for the Granville Park. Extend the fence along the north alley of the park to protect the children. Provide more benches and some picnic tables. Provide all-season water station and drinking fountains for the parks. And replace the dog area and playground area in the building with 15-minute parking and passenger pickup areas, which will be needed to accommodate the retail space in the ground floor, which I really hope will be a greengrocer. And I would request also to add a much larger loading bay to accommodate tractor-trailer, semi-trailer moving trucks and delivery trucks. Thank you for your consideration of my concerns and suggestions.
Thank you very much for coming in. The next speaker is speaker number three, Stephen Boas.
My name is Stephen Boas. I'm a renter, I live in Vancouver, and I work in Fairview in South Granville, very close to this site. I know the area quite well. Here you actually see the laneway and the trees that are in question and that have been mentioned by other speakers. And it's a shame to lose them all. This is a site that is Tier 3 and too much heist being requested. Next slide. That's the other side of the building with the other rezoning sign. And this building is in reasonable condition, and I think some of the owners will be speaking more about it next. Next slide. If you look at Shape Your City, what you will find is there's this page that has an old rendering, and this rendering hasn't changed. In fact, there's a little message there that, I'm going to bring it up on the next slide, that there's a revised application, and we're going to read that more, but there is no revised application posted here on Shape Your City. So this is insufficient notification of what is being proposed, because you don't know, I don't know what exactly is being proposed here. Next slide. This is a little bit more detail, yeah, so there's a revised application, 264 units, extra density, no mention of 24-story height here on Shape Your City, and as you can see, it's still the old application booklets and so on. Next slide. This is the cover page of the application booklet, the only one that you can download there from Shape Your City. Nothing, no new drawings. Next slide. This is from your actual referral report. Can you go one slide? This is a referral report illustration. It's the same slide. So the referral report has the old drawings from the old application, the old plans, the old sections, and you do not have a single image of the actual application that is being requested here for 24 stories. If you look at the plans, it's 20 stories there, so I think there's a serious issue there that we're not even getting the correct information about what is being asked for here in the neighbourhood. Next slide. Let's look at the shadow studies, and, well, I thought there's only one tower that's being requested on this block, and what you're seeing here is essentially a forest of towers. There are three zombie towers here, because they don't exist or aren't even proposals for any of those other sites. They've just been put there to mask the height and the shadow impacts of what's being requested by the applicant, and I, you know, I'm really concerned about material like this coming through for a public consultation. I would never do this. Next slide. Also, another shadow study from your referral report has the same shadow study from 10 AM and 12 PM. Like, it's right, like the sun didn't stand still, one of them's incorrect. And this is the material that is going into the staff referral report. Next slide. I made a masking wall, this is of course based on the only set of drawings that I have to work with, just to show the relative height, and the first speaker made a very good point that while there are towers in Fairview, they're of a completely different scale, and there's a lot more land around it, because there are these art towers in the park, versus the Broadway Plan form, which is essentially take out almost all the trees in the site and build as much density, and this is a Tier 3 site, so that would be about 3 FSR, that would be normally allowed. Next slide. And here's another view of the current context around the site, just to give you a feel of the massing and also the shadow impacts, which would be significant. It would be even more with a 24-story tower. Next slide. And that's more of a shadow impacts of a built-out Broadway Plan area, that includes developable sites. Next slide. So that's, yeah, the current sign. Next slide. What could be built here? Well, in a Tier 3, you could do something, this is almost 3 FSR, width frame, six stories, and this is probably a good fit if you were to look to redevelop this site. But what we're seeing here, next slide, last slide, is we have a situation where form follows profit, and we have a global operator with global capital coming in here to extract as much wealth as possible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. The next speaker we have is Lewis Villegas.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for this opportunity to speak. My name is Lewis Villegas, I'm a Vancouver resident and urban design specialist with 44 years' experience. Next slide. I oppose this tower and the Broadway Corridor Plan, because every tower approved by government perpetuates the housing affordability crisis, destroying families, neighbourhoods and the middle class. It is a fallacy that by increasing the housing stock, government will drive prices down. The commodity in short supply is land, not towers. Next slide. It is nakedly obvious that the profit motive is driving this vote. Government has been captured by the development industry, the proof is in the pudding. Government will give away density and height, putting the screws to the people by ginning up a housing crisis. Next slide, please. The increase in the cost of housing is all in the land, thus council must add land, not towers. Next. The housing market spiked after the Skytrain was started building. Cost of houses in the blue line went up by 10 times, condos on the red line went up by 12.5 times. The housing affordability is shown by the dotted green line at the bottom. The median household income today is 75% below market, thus making a mockery of the government policy pegging rents at 20% below market, then claiming affordability. It is obvious that the towers are harming Vancouver families and households with landlift inflation, with crowding, with towers building next to cottages, with shrinking condo units allowing developers to cram more people into one tower, thus maximising profits. Next slide, please. Yeah, that's the one I was talking to, the next one? Thank you. Edward T. Hall reminds us that a condo that is barely livable becomes uninhabitable at the exact moment a tower rises next door and cuts off the view, sunlight and the view of the sky dome. Next slide, please. The right plan for Vancouver is obvious. Mountains at the top, towers downtown, human-scale neighbourhoods below. Next slide. Here's a brief history of how government got the Vancouver urbanism wrong. In 1985, Skytrain, a people mover technology, is adopted for transit. In 1996, livable regions plan hails the new Skytrain and Towers era. In 2011, the regional growth strategy doubles down on the mistakes. In 2012, Mount Pleasant Plan is but a thinly veiled commodification of a neighbourhood. More will follow. 2022, the Broadway Corridor Frankenstein Plan. 2023, the provincial TOA, son of Frankenstein Plan. In 2024, Broadway Frankenstein Plan amendments give even more profits to the developers. And in 2025, in February of this year, meeting in Seattle with Vancouver developers, they told me that housing demand in Vancouver is drying up. Next slide, please. The Skytrain is the second major cause of the housing affordability crisis, A, because the system is unfit for inter-regional service, and B, because the loop is full. Does Broadway Tunnel, the capacity will be restricted to 7,500 people per hour per direction. What's the capacity of the Montreal subway? 35,000. Toronto? 40,000. New York City? 120,000. Their trains are 10 cars long. The Skytrain won't take people where they need to go, to places where crown land is available in abundance to build GAP, in sufficient quantity to meet or exceed demand. Next slide, please. Needed to end the housing crisis are four new lines of streetcar LRT churning together the three regional districts. Next slide. Of course, Vancouver will bend it from each one because the four lines converge downtown, the place where the towers do belong. This is good urbanism. Next slide. GAP, guaranteed affordable houses in perpetuity, is a similar mechanism to what is being used to peg rents at 20% below market in Vancouver. A contract on title limits resale value to purchase price plus COLA. With a single stroke of the pen, Canadian land can be secured for Canadians in perpetuity, which means forever. Next slide. This is what GAP looks like. Human-scale neighbourhoods building the regional vernacular from renewable, value-added forestry products. Next. In the neighbourhoods in Vancouver, GAP houses 11,000 people and 5,000 infill units, building in a human-scale typology, over a 630-acre neighbourhood footprint. Next.
And I'm sorry, we're at time.
Good, thanks for the opportunity, Mayor.
Thank you. Thanks, Lewis. Okay, the next speaker is speaker number five, Louise Bolivar. Hope I pronounced your name properly.
I wish I was here under different circumstances, but I'm born and raised in Vancouver. 1770 is my house. I'm an indigenous woman, sorry, I'm an indigenous woman, I'm also a person with disabilities. I'm 100% opposed to this development. I wanted to have kept my house for as long as I could. Stand here with you. I also have a member of the Downtown Eastside community for 18 years. I'm a member of the Kitsellaw community since 1994. Like, these vouchers, I've asked Greystar, I've, in letters and in emails and in phone calls to contact me about helping me to move out, they've never answered back towards me. It's like they're afraid of something, you're afraid of an indigenous woman, you're afraid of a person with disabilities? You're supposed to be professional billionaires, worth $36 billion. I could have had better contact with Marriott, at least for billionaires, they're professional, you guys are not. You can't even answer me back, you can't even meet me back? And I'm also going to do a shout out to the Downtown Eastside community. Condos should not be going to the Downtown Eastside community because that affects the people there, so, and I love that neighbourhood so much because they've always helped me out, so. But I would like to see Kitsellaw go back to how it used to be, when it was affordable, back in 1994. back in the 90s, the 80s, all that. We had a great sense of community and all these condos are actually moving in and a whole bunch of people. And I'm young. I was, yeah, born in 86, so I'm turning 39 this year. I've lost, I've had a really hard life. My grandma passed away in that building. And right now, because I, I used to own that building with my family, 1770. I, right now, I'm currently renting under Gray Star because for me, that's how much I love that building. I'm gonna hang on to it. Gray Star also did not give me, in my family, over a million dollars for our unit. They gave us under. So now, we are forced into moving next door, into the building next door at 1720. And Gray Star has been eyeballing that building. Well, guess what? I'm also gonna be helping the people in that building at 1720 to help fight against people like you. And the fact is, this city has allowed developers who do not want to even speak to the people they are buying from, or do not want to speak to the people who they're renting, they prefer to live behind these closed doors and get their money. Well, hello, when you're in a business, I'm a business person. I may, I work in the Downtown Eastside for 18 years. I work in most of the drop-in centers, Wish, Pace, Aisha, Megaphone. I'm all over the place down there. I'm also at the street corner at Main Hastings. And, but when, like, so I do have a very strong business sense for small business, which I do have. And I just want to say, like, when you're operating a business, you're supposed to be communicative. You're supposed to be, talking to people, have communication skills. And what these people are, they're just these people behind closed doors. Like I said, they don't even want to even answer me back or contact me back. And I've been reaching out to them nicely as I can to say, please, can you talk with me, you know, my situation, all that? And nothing. So I shouldn't be having to rent at three grand. I actually should be way under since the fact is, oh, so the intercom hasn't been working for months, months. And the fact is, you guys are worth $36 billion and you cannot even fix, fix a F-ing intercom? Seriously? How cheap can you guys get? Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, but thank you, everybody. I'm sorry.
Louise, thanks for coming in. Speaker number six is.
Yes, I want to keep the building, sorry, I want to keep the building as is. I believe in, I like this layout of the building, the size of it. It just needs to be fixed up. But my neighbor next to me, I would like him to stay there. I would want to keep back my same unit. I would like to buy it back, but if other people want to rent in it, okay. But I would just like to buy back my same unit, live in there happily ever after. But I also want to see social housing in my building, like to have like, you know, people who need it come in and stuff like that. But I want my building to stay as is. I don't want like condos and, don't want condos anywhere else. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much for coming in, Louise. Speaker number six, Charli Hurl.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity for speaking this evening. My comments are quite short. And they are. This submission is in addition to support to another resident from 1777 West 13th Avenue is where I live and have lived there for more than 30 years. And. This submission addresses serious concerns regarding the proposed modifications and development of the tower and podium at 1777 West 12th Avenue. These submissions are well researched and point out the serious ramifications. Incidentally, they, you receive them by mail. This resident is out of town and she regrets not being able to speak to us this evening. And she points out the serious ramifications that will deeply affect surrounding residents in the immediate surrounding properties. I dare say the common sense, that common sense was pushed aside and deliberately overlooked in the interest of the developer. Is the city of Vancouver now receiving an additional payment from the developer with the proposed modifications of the proposed building at 1777 West 12th Avenue? Quality of life of affected residents should supersede potential developer and government financial gain. Among many considerations that have been addressed, the beautiful, healthy, mature trees lining the back lane in question were one of the attractions to me when I decided to purchase my property at 1777 West 13th Avenue more than 30 years ago. The city severely restricts residents' need to remove and replace old, partially dead trees on private property, but it would permit removal of these beautiful, healthy trees, which provide oxygen to the neighborhood and are a sound barrier to the traffic on West 12th Avenue to favor the developer. Because of the sheer size and height of the proposed building, the developer's proposed space to replace some trees is unattainable and severely limited. The notably unmentioned entrance and exit driveways to access the underground park aid at 1777 West 13th Avenue will be severely affected with obstructions during construction and the unrealistic and senseless proposed plans for the use of the lane for storefronts following complete completion of construction. And bike lanes are included in there as well, too. And as pointed out a little bit earlier, the lane is very well used by a lot of commercial vehicles that service our area. Please understand that all of this is completely unacceptable. Thank you for the opportunity.
This is the third and final call for speakers. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll free at 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be posted on X made available on the live stream. If there are any additional speakers in the council chamber, please come forward to the podium. Is there anyone? Yep, please go ahead. And sorry, just for the record, can I please get your full name?
N-O-N. Last name is K-O-N-E-S.
And are you a resident of Vancouver?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Please go ahead.
So I just want to make a few points for council to consider. I live in the area and I want to share my experience over the last few years of, and what the impact of a new tower may add that will need to be addressed. So. 12th and Berard are extremely busy streets. Very busy, almost all day, deep into the evening or nighttime. Accidents in that intersection is quite often. Mainly because it's a two-street, it's a two-lane streets, both of them, those major highway, roads or arteries. And they allow left lane from all four, for most part of the day. So when that reduces the amount of flow traffic to one lane and people are trying to catch up with those orange and everything, that will need to be, in my opinion, the city will need to address that, especially if there is a more dense or traffic because of the new tower that may come in. I understand that there is a commercial side out of the building. I think everybody should be in understanding that there is little to no parking street and those two major roads. Last, and I'm not sure if it's included or not, but I haven't heard that. I'm not sure if the development includes childcare facility, which I believe is in a great need in this city. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Clerk, are there any other speakers online or in the chamber?
Not seeing any and none on the line.
Okay, so we're now going to take another five minute recess for, and wait for any additional speakers to come forward.
It'll be super quick and speedy because I think all the other speakers, I mean, there is nothing more to say. But one thing in these rezonings that I've noticed that there's like giving lenience to in the bylaws is the, the noise bylaws. And. Just because people, it keeps popping up to me, people keep mentioning smoking and different things, so I'll just say it. But like, this is not new. Like in my, when I was a child, I knew that noise pollution was the new secondhand smoke. And. All of these, I'm gonna go all over the place, but I swear it, it does correlate. Cause like all these towers, like the, they're the main contribution to dying birds. I think it's like about 40% of like them die because they fly in the towers. So that's just like an imagery right there. And then you're getting rid of all this nature and people are hearing birds in nature, right? It's something that uplifts you so much. It helps with my mental health immensely. Actually, I don't even know if I would feel human without hearing the sound of birds or just acknowledging the other creations around. Like it doesn't, it wouldn't, I wouldn't be connected to. Our earth, the earth, mother. Like, you know, it's just, it's so. In our ancient psyche, right? And I can't hear the birds anymore. I live in an area that's a great area in terms of if you want data about how things turn out. And. Trees come down every week. Like actually, I should stop showing up here because the trees are coming down while I'm here and that hurts me too. I'm like, shh, when, you know, when do I stop talking to you guys and just get up a tree? And even the trees that do exist, I'm going around to listen to the birds and the apps don't hear them anymore because of the construction and the demolition going on. So it's hard to even know they're there. Like you're literally smashing out something that exists or making it, like you can't hear it. So if you can't hear it, it's not there and you don't have to protect it, but it is all protected. Yeah, but it's, I, I, like forgiveness everywhere because we're, we all have noise pollution. You can't hear that. You really, really have to listen to hear nature. I, well, I don't know. I hear it really easily. I'm just trying to suggest how others can listen. So just make the effort because it is very difficult because. People are trying to make louder noises so that you don't hear it. And that's the noise pollution that's been around. I don't know. Thanks again for the opportunity.
Thanks, Sarah. We do have another speaker. Is that on the phone? Okay, great. Can we please get your full name and whether or not you're a resident of Vancouver, please?
Oh, hi, is it me?
Oh, hi, is it me?
It's you.
It's me. Oh, hello. Hey, my name's Cheryl Stein.
Cheryl.
Hi, I've been in chambers before and I've been listening tonight. I'm a resident of Vancouver and um I'm affected by this Broadway plan, like a lot of residents you've been hearing from. Especially that woman crying. She has a lot of sentiment in her and a lot of bravery to stand up and cry and speak. And um she speaks for many, you know, thousands of people. You're not just seeing one. As you would probably think off the wall type person, you're seeing one that represents thousands upon thousands of people. And I just wonder, you know, Ken and council respectively. Why are you holding these public meetings to hear from the public if you're not listening to the public? You know, we're just mere casualties of this whole Broadway plan. And we don't seem to make a difference or a pittance to this whole modernization that's going on. And we just get stepped over and crushed in the process, like we don't mean anything. And it's just nobody in the city actually likes Ken, what you and ABC are doing. And I don't think this is off topic. It's the Broadway plan you're pushing through as well as raising taxes and building a million dollar sign out of taxpayers' pockets when we can't even afford food. Um, you know, you guys are like, I mean, you look at us when we speak that we're the crazy ones. But I think you guys are not listening and, you know, I don't mean this disrespectively, but we're not the crazy ones. I think someone else is. And it's like, we just want to speak and eventually you're gonna get us shut down where you're gonna rubber stamp everything anyway, which is gonna be a sad day because there should be democracy and City Hall should be listening to its public because that's who pays your paycheck, people. You know, us people who are trying to work and survive and defeat this Broadway plan and live in a neighborhood, a happy neighborhood we love, are going to work, getting our taxes taken off, our property taxes for people who own. And it's going into the coffers of you guys who are running like, who are just railroading over us. You know, and doing what you like because it's all about money. You know, Vancouver's become all about money and it's driving a lot of people out of town. I just don't know who's gonna be living in these towers, but I thank you for listening to me. And I hope um I've made some succinct points. And I hope you're gonna listen to us because we take a lot of time and emotion and our intellect to speak. Like, you know, your speakers on this topic were excellent and I hope you're gonna listen to them when you vote and you just don't vote blindly green and unanimous. You know, really give these plans a thought.
Great, thank you, Cheryl. Go ahead.
Yeah, and and how much time do I have left?
Uh, a minute and twenty thirty two seconds.
Okay, I'll use that. Um, so I just want to say your speakers tonight were excellent. They made a lot of sense in the shadows as well as the affordability. Louis had a great um, and I'm not trying to pick on you guys, by the way. But Louis had a great graph. You should pay attention to that, you know, prices are skyrocketing and not keeping up with people's wages and affordability. And um it's just gonna be a lot of monstrosities in Vancouver around the Broadway plan. And it's really a strip of, you know, maybe a couple kilometers that are gonna take people from point A to point B. And it's gonna impact so many people's lives and displace so many people who love this community. I've lived in South Grahamville for over twenty five years. And I've seen the changes up and down the strip and of Grahamville Street. And I've never seen such terrible things happening as this Broadway plan. And please listen to us when we speak to you and give us respect. We do represent thousands upon thousands, everybody who can't speak because they're busy working or they're busy with other lives and things going on. But thank you, council, and thank you, mayor, for giving us the opportunity. I hope you continue to give us the opportunity. And I hope you really do listen to us. It doesn't fall on deaf ears. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much for calling in today, Cheryl. Um, clerk, do we have another call? Yes, okay, great. Um, caller, can we please get your full name and whether or not you're a resident of Vancouver, please?
Yes, my name is Robert Ellis. I'm a resident of Vancouver. I've been a resident of Vancouver for over fifty years. Um, I understand the sentimentality that people bring to these discussions and the longing to return to a simpler time and a less expensive Vancouver. But the reality of it is that that's not gonna happen. Um, Vancouver is a very vibrant city and change is inevitable. And I accept the fact that you as council members have a very difficult job because you are trying to balance the need to achieve greater density in the city of Vancouver, but at the same time trying to preserve all the good qualities that the city of Vancouver has. I accept the fact that there is going to be change. I accept the fact that there is going to be an increased density in housing and I accept the fact that along Broadway, that is a a an appropriate place for there to be increased density because we have the new uh uh Skytrain that's coming along. And it makes only good sense to have increased development along that Broadway. But what concerns me here is that this is not incremental change. This is drastic change. And historically, incremental change has been a better way to change things in life because we can't anticipate all the unintended consequences of drastic change. It's just not possible. We have right now Broadway, which is a very vitalized, very vibrant area, and it has the Skytrain there. It has congestion. It has high rises. So my suggestion would be that the city council actually modify its approval so that the approvals that are given initially will be right along the Broadway corridor. I'm talking about Broadway, not Eighth, Seventh, or Tenth or Eleventh. The development goes along Broadway. It's where it's suited. It is, it is convenient for people to have their housing along there when they have the extra transportation. And then as time allows and as the demand for housing continues, then the city can move incrementally away from Broadway so that it will go to Eighth and then Seventh Avenue. It can go to Tenth Avenue and Eleventh Avenue. But to 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 simply ignore the opportunity which exists along Broadway itself, I believe is a mistake. And I think that this is unnecessary and drastic change and that we will ultimately regret it and that we would have been better served if, in fact, you came up with incremental change that allows this the same development that's gonna take place, but it takes place in the immediate area where it is best suited and best served first. And then as the need develops, then you can expand it beyond that. Those are my comments. Thank you for hearing.
Great, thank you very much, Robert. Uh, do we have any other speakers online or in the chamber? No? Okay, uh, seeing no further speakers, the speakers list is now closed. Seeing that there are few or no public comments received after four P M., I'm now gonna close the receipt of public comments. Now, does the applicant team have uh any closing comments? I believe we have one line, our tenant relocation coordinator that she would call in.
Good evening, mayor and council. Just want to confirm that you can hear me.
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Great, thank you. I am Renee Saint Germain. I am acting as the tenant relocation coordinator for Gray Star and wanted to confirm uh that we are actively working with the tenant relocation team with the city. Um, our draft TRP tenant relocation plan is with the housing planners for review currently. We currently have three existing tenants that reside in the building, uh, two that are vacated for a total of five that are eligible for the TRP program, which we are closely following and ensuring that we are following the guidance from the city and working with all of those tenants respectively on the tenant relocation plan. I also just wanted to confirm with respect to appreciate the comments. Previously, we do have a professional management company that has worked with us prior to us acquiring the building and it becoming the wrap up. Uh, they continue to manage the building and do work very closely to address any tenants' comments and concerns and any issues that the building.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Uh, do our team members have any uh closing comments?
As closing comments, staff would just like to remind that there is a yellow memo attached that must be considered with this application. As well, I just want to make note that this uh this building was a strata wind up, um, just for clarification. Thank you.
Zoe, um, do uh does council have any final questions for our team members? Uh, councillor Montague?
Yeah, thanks, mayor. Um, a little quick questions for staff. Before that, first of all, since it was brought up, um, if we look at fish and wildlife reports, the number one killer of urban birds is domestic cats. But um, question for staff is you, you just mentioned that this was a strata building. How many units are in, I don't see how many units are in the building in the report.
In the original building, there were forty one units.
Okay, but only five uh are rentals? Is that what, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure that it's uh only five of the unit of those units were being rented? Were the others owner occupied or?
At the time of application, there were six secondary rental units and five of which were eligible for the TRPP.
And the remaining were were unoccupied or occupied by owners?
Um, perhaps I'll have my housing planner um expand on that.
Hello, this Natalia is a zoning housing planner on the file. Um, yeah, so the other um, so there's six units that were uh secondary rental and five were eligible tenants. The other were owners. So it was not identified for our TRP work.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. I'm assuming we don't have an idea what's going in the commercial space at this point or or and if we don't, do we have, do we know what it's capable of? Housing, what sort of business are we looking at potentially?
Confirm that the CRUs are around thirteen hundred square feet to fifteen hundred square feet large. Um, and I'm not sure if the applicant has any comments about services that they would like to see within the applicant, within the CRUs. Oh, sorry, my bad.
Sorry, uh, it's okay. Um, hi, teen senior rezoning planner. Um, we don't know at this moment who will be teneting the commercial space. The tenant, the applicant might know, but we're not aware of that right now. But I would say that the size of the CRU units are, you know, would be able to accommodate accommodate local shops and services for the local community versus being, say, larger big box stores.
Right, so not a large grocery store, but potentially um like a a produce store or a small, small corner grocery store.
Certainly.
Cafe, that sort of thing.
That's right.
Okay. There's in appendix B, there's some discussion on uh requirements to upgrade the intersection of Twelfth and Burrard. Um, it talks about signal uh changes. I'm assuming that's strictly pedestrian signal changes, not vehicles, considering it's only two lanes in each direction and no left turn uh bays?
Um, that's correct. My understanding that it would be a pedestrian countdown timer and accessible pedestrian signals that would form the upgrades at Burrard and Twelfth.
And I'm assuming no left turn advanced signals because of the road size or and the fact that it's only two, two lanes each direction?
I'm gonna have my senior planner.
I don't think it's that clear in the conditions whether or not it would be a left turn signal, though probably unlikely. It usually would say if it were.
Okay, yeah, my guess is that the size of the roadway limits what changes can be made to those signals. I think that's it, mayor. Thanks.
Thank you very much, councillor Kirby Young.
Yeah, thanks, mayor. We heard um a number of sort of very specific suggestions from uh some of the speakers, um particularly around the interface with uh neighboring buildings. And there was commentary about, I'm just searching through the details in the report, for example, uh, sort of a dog amenity, um, and noise that that would generate as well as um sort of like landscaping or, you know, it's existing tree landscaping, buffering, et cetera. Can you um provide some context around that for me, whether there was consideration given to that specific feedback in the process?
Um, good evening, man, council. Uh, Ryan Dins, senior development planner. Uh, the proposal does propose a dog, a small dog park at the land. It's voluntary from the applicant. Um, so staff could continue working with the applicant team for the development permit stage um to assess the impact and evaluate the the landscape at land. But overall, uh, for amenity space, the um active use have been proposed to face the street. All the inactive use suggests agriculture.
Can you speak, can you speak a bit closer to your microphone for me?
Uh, in terms of the amenity space, uh, all of the uh active use have been located in facing the street. And um uh uh inactive use suggests um urban agriculture. Um, uh, is proposed facing the lands. That's how to minimize the noise impact to the adjacency.
Well, the dog park specifically, I'm sorry it's late. It's been a full day. I'm going through the report, trying to find specific details about it. That is facing where?
Uh, the dog park is proposed to be uh facing at facing the lane.
The lane. Do we have any precedence of having, uh, that's a unique amenity? Do you have any precedent? Um, or sort of past practices around how amenities like that and how and where they're cited?
I don't, uh, I don't think we have any standard in terms of location of dog park. This is a voluntary proposal from the applicant.
Okay, and are we finding that more and more renters in the city are having pets and we're getting requests for pet friendly housing?
Uh, I cannot answer, but uh just, I guess, I don't know.
Thinking, while I'm waiting for the housing planner, can you tell me which page in the report, I've lost it, that describes that amenity?
Uh, it's it's in the drawings.
Oh, in the drawings, not in the body of the report?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Do we have, I do have a finite amount of time. Do we have someone coming on?
Hello, uh, Natalia, housing planner. Uh, so yes, we hear often that tenants want to see more pet friendly units available.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna leave it there for now. Thanks.
Great, thank you very much. Um, okay, uh, so clerk, did we receive any additional public comments since the close of public comments?
No.
Okay, I'd like to remind council that we will need to move the recommendation for item four together with the yellow memo dated May the ninth, two thousand twenty five, entitled C D dash one rezoning seventeen seventy West Twelfth Avenue conditions of approval in appendix B. Uh, council will now make its decision on this application. Do we have a mover for the recommendation? Great, councillor Dominado seconded by councillor Montague. Thank you very much. Council, is there any discussion? Councillor Klassen.
Thanks, mayor. I'm sort of coming into hour fourteen of my day right now, so I'm uh my my thoughts are probably not gonna be as precise as I would like. In this chamber, I think that we've tried to make a point of encouraging um a good sort of corporate citizenship among our developers right now. And I just, I'm, I'm, I I'm not saying this in a way to sound in any way um uh as though that I don't think that the uh the companies involved here are Dialogue, for example, is I consider be one of the best urban design companies in Canada. And I think that they can do very good work. But I it 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 feels like some of the questions and concerns of the community may have been probably addressed in an earlier stage of this process by really just giving better answers and a better understanding. What I heard tonight is a lot of concerns, some I was just sort of described as being fearful of 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 the implications of of the new development. And this is very understandable. This is happening right across many cities, including ours. But I would like it to make sure that in addition, it's sort of coming into this chamber that the work with the community is 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 done as well as can be in advance. So we are not having to sort of hear from people who are bringing deep concerns about future. I mean, you know, looking at this project itself, it it, you know, it's compliant with the the overall thrust of the Broadway plan. It will provide new housing. It's mere steps away from a major transit infrastructure they're installing there. I heard the comments about social isolation. That's an issue that's been extremely important to me. I know that the Granville Senior Center is about two blocks away from this from this location. They talk about that frequently, about how they try to do their work, try to address that. But I think there are measures that we can do in terms of how we we build and we we forge community. And so you know, we had an outburst here this evening in relation to a tenant. I don't know the whole story. I don't need to know it. But it just seems to me that these are usually indications that there there needs to be more work done in terms of working with community. And and I just wanted to sort of put that out on the record and not necessarily for this applicant, for any that come into this chamber. We've recently been telling developers that we want them to be in here, to talk to us, to tell their story so that can be accountable to it and help help us as we move these projects forward. But the same is true of this one, and I would encourage that to be the case moving forward for anybody else that comes comes into this chamber. These are sort of complex challenges of of community development. We're a growing city. We have enormous pressures on us, including some of the people we've heard throughout the evening who are just desperate to get into the housing market at all. So again, I just I appreciate the work that happens, but I think going that extra mile in terms of working and talking to community. I I've seen, by the way, in terms of dog friendly spaces, my mother-in-law lives in a place that has a a small pad. It's up on a podium and it allows people to get together. Usually it's the the dogs having to relieve themselves. But boy, oh, boy, that has probably created more friends and cur- and relationships within her 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 housing development than would have been possible otherwise. So and also just having a place, a playground for children. I think that any concerns around noise will certainly be mitigated and the sound of of children laughing and playing is sometimes is is actually a very positive thing. So I I'm looking at this project optimistically and I'm hoping that that it goes forward with a bit more of a harmonious feeling among the the residents. Many people here express the fact that they've been in this neighborhood for a very long time, and I think we need to respect that. At the same time, the neighborhood is changing and we need to work together when we're doing that. And that includes everybody involved in these projects, including city staff, people working on tenant relocation and and the people who come into the neighborhoods wanting to bring bring new housing. So I'll leave it there, but I'll be supporting this this application. But I just wanted to make those remarks because I think it's important in the context of what we've been hearing throughout the evening. Thanks, sir.
Thank you very much, councillor. Okay, seeing no one else in the queue, I'm gonna now call a vote. Can we please go to the voting panel? And if the councillors can register their votes, please?
Mayor, again, I need a vote. This is in favor, please. Thanks.
Great. And that passes unanimously. Okay, so we need that finishes up the business for today. We need a motion to adjourn. Councillor Montague, seconded by Councillor Dominado. All those in favor say yea. All those opposed say nay. Great. Motion's carried. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, staff.
Thank you.